Good evening and welcome to the October 5, 2017, Community of the Whole Budget Discussion. And the first item would be the roll call.
Hirsch.
Here.
Kittleson.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Truhl.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Bartlett, Boersmott, and Johnson are absent and excused, so there are ten present today.
Okay, thank you Lana. For new business, the first item is to review, authorize, and direct the proper city officials to approve the proposed 2018 Stoughton Utilities Budget and five-year capital improvement plan. This came through the Utilities Committee, and I believe we have a presentation. And who would like to start?
Okay. Jayman.
Thank you, Mr. Swadley. I'm Jayman Friedel. I'm the Finance Manager with the Utilities. It's pretty confident coming into this week, but it seemed like ten times a day Bob would walk by like, "You're doing okay, it's gonna go smoothly, don't worry." So, got a little nervous as the week went on. But with that said, as we move through this, just interrupt with any questions if you need further clarification. I'd much rather this be a discussion with open dialogue, as opposed to me just kind of regurgitating a bunch of numbers to you folks. So, just feel free to interrupt, you won't hurt my feelings at all. With that said, I know it's a new face up here. You guys have probably become pretty accustomed to what Kim Jennings had presented to you in previous years. So, that's a little nerve-wracking in and of itself, because you may think things have changed. But overall, the theories, the premise, the idea behind our budget hasn't changed at all. We kind of have three key objectives that we're looking at and keeping in mind throughout the entire process. First one is, how are our rates doing? Do we need to start looking at any rate changes in the future? Obviously, the CIP budget, what projects do we need to do versus what projects do we want to do? And maybe some things need to be postponed or delayed. And then the third key objective is obviously financing. Do we need to issue any debt or look at any alternative financing options that are available? So, we have those three key objectives, same things that Kim would have been looking at in the past. And we have three key indicators for those: rate of return, unrestricted cash balances, and then, of course, debt coverage. So, in and of itself, the process hasn't changed, and the theory behind the budget hasn't changed, even if the materials have maybe changed a little bit from what you're used to. With that said, before we jump into the actual 18 budget numbers, I think it's worth taking a quick look back to see how 17 is gonna estimate out for the entire calendar year versus what was presented to you folks in the 2017 budget last year. So, I'm gonna kind of go through that very quickly. I'll go electric, water, wastewater, right in order. Again, if you have any questions as we go through it, just feel free to jump in. Electric, in terms of operating income, where we're estimating it for the rest of the year compared to what was budgeted and presented to you folks last year, we're actually looking at operating income lower than budgeted by about $250,000, and net income lower than budgeted by about $290,000, okay? There's two main reasons for that. Obviously, sales are down, and our O&amp;M is actually down as well, offsetting some of those lost sales. In terms of sales for 17 compared to what we budgeted and where we really think we're gonna end up, there's three main things that happened. When the budget was presented to you folks last year, Kim had assumed about a 3% rate increase. The PSC saw fit to give us 1.7. So, the 3% was factored into the budget, and in reality, we got 1.7, okay? The second reason is, electric consumption is actually down 2.5% through August compared to last year. And then, the third reason is, when Kim did the budget, she had to assume a 1-1 effective rate increase, and we didn't get the rates implemented till April 1st. So, that's the reason for the drop in sales revenue in 17 compared to what was actually budgeted. O&amp;M has also decreased by about $500,000. Again, that's mainly due to purchase power, lower consumption that we're actually seeing than what was actually budgeted for 2017. Water operating income is lower than budgeted by about $75,000, and net income is actually higher than budgeted by about $16,000, okay?
Do you have a slide that you're talking?
I don't. These are just old 17 numbers. We'll see them in the next slides, but these are just kind of comparisons of what you'll see. Historically, I don't think you ever saw budgeted versus estimated, so the actual 17 budget is not in there. But I did want to touch base and kind of let you folks know what 17 looks like, because that's our jumping-off point, and it'll kind of help you to understand the 18 numbers a little bit better. But we'll see the numbers as we go through this. Again, water operating income expected to be lower than budgeted by about $76,000. Again, operating revenues/sales are down simply due to we're about 4% or 5% lower in consumption than we were at this time last year. So, it's a big hit on our sales revenue for water. The good news is, our capital contribution income is gonna be higher than budgeted by about $91,000, and that's for the Nordic Ridge Phase 2 project. So, bottom line actually looks a little bit stronger than what was budgeted for water. Wastewater operating income is actually gonna be higher than budgeted for 17 by about $13,000, and net income's gonna be higher than budgeted by about $165,000. Surcharge revenue is gonna be higher than what we thought, which is good news, and then we also are gonna see about $165,000 in contributed revenue from the Nordic Ridge Phase 2 project. That wasn't in the 2017 budget. So, with that said, I just kind of want to give you an idea of where the 17 numbers are gonna end up versus what you folks saw last year in the actual budget presentation, because like I said, that's our jumping-off point to the 2018 budget, and then you can kind of see where the changes go from there. So, now, we can actually jump into the 2018 budget. Actually scroll down to that page, yep. Two disclaimers before we go into this. Obviously, we take a very conservative approach. We kind of approach the budget on a worst-case scenario-type standpoint. We can't get too aggressive with our revenues, and we can't trim off a lot of O&amp;M in places that we think we maybe could, because we do have to kind of prepare for a pretty bad year in sales. So, again, it's a conservative approach, worst-case scenario-type budget, which is probably pretty similar to what Kim had presented in the past. The other thing with this budget is it does not include any possible rate increases. This budget was prepared using the rates that are in place as of right now to see where we end up for 2018, okay? On this side, there's just one line I want to point out. The pilot line, you can see there, in total for 2018, since this affects most people in the room tonight, we're estimating that we're gonna turn over almost $900,000 in payment in lieu of taxes in 2018 to the city. And that's for water and electric combined. So, again, this page here is just the combined budget for 2018, not a lot of comparatives here, but I did want to point out what the pilot is estimated to be for 2018. You can scroll on to the next page. Okay, yep, this is the electric budget, and you can see there's some historical information there, 14, 15, 16 across. The estimated 17 numbers, which is what I was just talking about, as opposed to what you saw in the budget last year, and then the proposed 2018 budget numbers. First thing is, we're budgeting about a 3.29% rate of return, which equates to about $383,000 in operating income for electric in 2018. You can see there that sales are estimated to increase by about 1.7% compared to 2017. Two reasons for that, it's gonna be the first full-year impact of our rate increase, and we did build in a very small kind of growth assumption factor into those numbers. Purchase power costs, which are right here, this first line, are anticipated to increase by about 1.6%. Again, that's just due to some inflation in the purchase power costs, and then, of course, the growth factor assumption in there as well. Depreciation is anticipated to increase by about 8.8%. That's actually a pretty big number for a jump in depreciation expense. You'd usually expect between 1% and 3% depending on the year. But if you look at the capital assets going in for electric between '17 and '18 combined, it's almost $5 million. And over the last five years, the electric utility has averaged about $650,000 in capital assets going in. So, that's why we're seeing that big jump in depreciation expense there. Same holds true with the pilot. We're increasing by about 10.2%, or about $41,000 from '17 to '18. Again, that just coincides with the capital activity that's going on the electric side, okay? Some other major assumptions that were in here that you might want to be made aware of, the 2.25% wage increase across the board, with the exception of a few utilities employees that were discussed at the meeting last week. We did use a 1.5% inflationary cost for most of the O&amp;M costs, the operation and maintenance costs, and we did use 1.5 inflationary rate applied to the mill rates for the pilot, okay? Gatsby 68 is our share of the pension costs through the WRS. We don't know what that estimate's gonna be right now, so we basically had to look at 16 to see what that is. It's impossible to estimate right now. In 2016, the electric share of those costs was about $57,000. That's kind of a wild card in this budget, because we don't know what it's gonna be. It could actually turn into a revenue in 2018, we're just not sure. So, to be conservative, we went with 2016 number on that as a major assumption. So, any questions on the budget document itself for electric and any of the changes from '17 to '18? Okay, we can go to the next page. So, these are a little bit hard to see, but I think they're in the packet that you had. I like graphs, I like visuals. It kind of helps explain the numbers a little bit better. So, the top graph here is actually our O&amp;M costs. The blue line is 2005 through 2016 actual. The red represents 2017 and 2018, and then you have the dash trend line there. You can see, there's a little bit of a gap between the trend and the 2017 and 2018 amounts. The main reason for that is, in 2017, we incurred a large amount of tree trimming costs, which kind of throws that trend line off. But other than that, looking at the O&amp;M costs with inflation, it looks pretty reasonable to what the trend has been in the last few years. The next column, next graph down on the left-hand side, this represents capital expenditures 2012 through 2018. Again, the red represents 2017 and 2018. You see, we've been pretty stable, 2012 through 2016, and then you see the big jump in 2017 and 2018, which explains the increase in depreciation expense and pilot, which is the graph just to the right of that. You can see, it's kind of moving along pretty gradually, and then we hit 2017 and '18, and it ticks up due to those capital assets hitting the books. The next graph down on the left-hand side is sales in kilowatt-hours, 2012 through 2018. You can see, there's really no rhyme or reason. Electric is really a victim of the weather. It's hard to actually forecast this stuff. But you can see, the trend line has been going down, and for 2017, we're forecasting under the trend line, and 2018 as well. The reason for that is actually the graph that's kitty-cornered down from there. If we look at this graph, this is kind of interesting. This is the sales in kilowatt-hours, 2012 through 2017, and this is the actual numbers, January through August for each year. And if you look at the 2017 number, the one that's on the far right-hand side there, we've had the lowest amount of consumption through August that we've seen in the last six years. And that kind of explains why we're forecasting such lower sales for 2017 and 2018. So, any questions on the graphs here? Yeah?
So, you're saying that we're doing less sales? Is that because of energy efficiencies and different light bulbs and all that?
I think that has a lot to do with it, and it was just a really mild summer. It just, it really was. And you can see kind of the peaks and valleys on the sales, the total sales. You know, 2016 was a little bit warmer, less mild, so we're gonna see that pick up. But some of it does definitely have to do with energy efficiency. And people are just more conscious of it, too, you know, when they see a rate increase. It's the biggest part of the utility bill on the electric side, that's the number they see. They start yelling at the kids to turn off the lights and, you know, keep the air conditioning a little bit hotter and things like that, so.
So, with that said, with, you know, it looks like the trend is going down, and that means less revenue. We don't want to just keep on hiking our rates up. How are you guys planning for the future to reduce expenses? I mean, is that in here at all?
To reduce expenses, again, if you look at, there are opportunities to reduce expenses. It hasn't been analyzed that deeply. The funny thing with electric utility is, we're basically victims with WPPI's purchase power cost. Now, WPPI's been doing great things with renewable energy. There's a big, is it a solar farm that's set to come online in 19, 20, something like that? So, they're making a really big effort to kind of reduce the rates. Again, this comes down to whether, are we gonna continue to see this mild weather going forward? I doubt it. For the most part, utilities expenses are generally fixed. You're looking at depreciation, pilot, things like that on the O&amp;M side. We can dig in and do a deeper analysis, but some things are just needed to be done.
Can you give me what pilot means again?
Pilot is the payment in lieu of taxes. Since we're a non-taxable entity, we still pay this payment in lieu of taxes, and we turn it over to the city every year. So, I think we're actually the biggest taxpayer in the city, right? We are the biggest.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question from Alder Person. Well, I just wanted to address that a little also, as far as expenses. I mean, expenses rarely go down because costs go up. And even though usage is down a little bit because of weather and that type of thing, we're also growing as a community. So, I mean, we're adding grid and, you know, adding things to our utility also, so.
And it is hard to anticipate that growth. I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Engelberger. One thing I did leave out of this is the possible impacts of two big issues that are coming, not issues, but two big, kind of bigger developments coming in in 2018. It's the hotel and the senior center. I actually did not include those estimated revenue figures in the budget itself, because we just don't know when that's gonna be in service, and I wanted to take more of a conservative approach to it. But I think, just kind of a high-level swag on this, I came up between $17,000 to $20,000 in net revenue, so that would be actual sales less our purchase power costs. So, we'd be adding that to the bottom line. I think those projects are gonna be in place in April or May, so we'll probably see half of that. But again, it's hard to take into consideration what the impact of the growth is gonna be on us. We try to, but again, to take a conservative approach, we kind of have to leave some of that off at this point. And again, as I mentioned when I started, this is worst-case scenario. This mild weather is not gonna continue. We're gonna see peaks and valleys, and we're just a victim to the weather. Any other questions on the graphs? Okay. But overall, you know, it's not all doom and gloom. The electric utility's still gonna end up with a pretty strong year. We'll be approaching five months of unrestricted cash on hand, which is pretty much where we want to be. We'd like to see the rate of return a little bit stronger, but it's still a healthy rate of return as well. So, I'm not anticipating looking at rates. If everything holds true, and we see no growth, and the weather continues to be this mild late '19, I'd maybe start looking at electric rates, but nothing in the near future at this point, so. Okay. So, that's electric. Water's set up the exact same way here. Overall, we're budgeting a 2.7% rate of return. We're allowed 5.25% from the PSC. This equates to about $149,000 in operating income. And you can see here, it's kind of a funny number, but we're budgeting sales growth at 0%. I know there's probably gonna be some questions on it, but hopefully the graphs will explain that, so maybe we can address those then. O&amp;M costs are anticipated to increase about 2.74% or $28,000. Again, this is just general inflation, our wage increases, and then in 2018, we do have well rehab, well number seven rehab, that's budgeted for about $25,000. So, that is most of the jump in the 2018 O&amp;M costs, okay? Depreciation, pretty straight across the board, 3.1% increase, basically what we would expect in an increase in depreciation expense with new capital assets going in. And then the pilot's increasing by 6.1%, up to $454,000 coming from the water, okay? Some other major assumptions on the water side, again, the 2.25% wage increase across the board, with the exception of a few employees. 2%, I use a 2% inflationary rate for O&amp;M, and then the 1.5% for pilot for water. We've been seeing a little bit higher inflationary rates on the water side as opposed to the electric side, so I did increase our inflationary rate a little bit. The pension side of the costs in 2016 was $20,000. Again, we can't estimate that at this point, so we had to throw it into 2018. That could really move this budget up or down depending on what it comes in to be. And then again, to address the hotel and senior center, we're looking, estimating around $4,000 to $5,000 in net revenue a year from those two buildings on the water side, which has not been factored into this budget at all. So, moving on to the graphs, they're set up the exact same way as the electric. You can see the O&amp;M there with the trend. We're just a little bit above the trend gap there. But for the most part, it relates to two big expenses. In 2017, we had an $18,000 meter chamber replacement program that we weren't quite anticipating. And then in 2018, we have the $25,000 well rehab, and that's why you kind of see that gap between what the estimated and budgeted numbers are and what the trend is actually gonna be. But other than that, it looks pretty reasonable compared to what the trend is. Capital expenditures, the graph down there on the left-hand side, this is 2012 through 2018. It's been pretty steady. 16 and 17 are about the same. We see a little drop-off in '18. The water capital expenditures really do pick up in '19 and '20, though. We're looking at about $1 million a year, starting in 2019 then. Pilot, as capital expenditures go, so I'll go with the pilot. I should throw in here that there's some major assumptions within the pilot calculations themselves. We know the base number, we know what we're calculating it on. The problem is, we don't know what the assessment ratio is gonna be or the mill rates. So, that's kind of, it's a shot in the dark at this point, so it could go up or down. But this is kind of the best guess estimate that we have for the pilot at this point. The next graph, the sales in gallons, 2012 through 2018. You can see what this has been doing the last five years. It's either been decreasing or stagnating. We've basically been staying at the same level since 2014 in terms of sales on the water side. The trend line is shooting down. I'm never gonna reduce our consumption, so I basically leveled it off for 2017 and '18. And that's why on the previous page, you saw that 0% sitting there for sales, because we just, we don't see the growth yet. Hopefully, we see it, but we have a hot summer, and a lot of people are out watering their lawns or something. But again, a lot of this is water conservation, people are more conscious of it, and we did have a very mild summer. The graph kitty-cornered to that again, same as we had in electrics. This is sales in gallons, 2012 through 2017. This is January through August of each year. Again, the last number on the right there, 2017, this is the lowest total we've had in the last six years. So, any questions on water? Yeah?
It was actually gonna be for both. It was just kind of, what's, I don't quite understand what's going on with the pension expenses?
The pension expenses, so, we're all in WRS, Wisconsin Retirement System. Even though that's held in a trust, we can't touch it, the trust manages it, they have their own audit done. At this point, it's fairly well-funded. I think it's almost 100% funded at this point, but it does go up and down a little bit. In any given year, if it's not fully funded, we have this thing called a pension liability. Somewhere along the lines, the Government Accounting Standards Board saw fit to take assets that are in a trust fund, audited their standalone fund, and say, "You know what? You cities and utilities have to share in all of this." So, sometimes when we're more than funded, when the WRS program itself is overfunded, we'll actually see revenue. It's a non-cash expense, it's in and out, it ebbs and flows, it's really just, it's basically deferred costs on our balance sheet in our income statement that just goes up and down with how the WRS actually does in any given year. And unfortunately, we're victims to actuaries, and we have to wait till we get those numbers for 2018, which we probably won't see till January '19.
Okay, yeah, because that's where I was curious about the massive swing from 2015 to 2016 across it. I mean, from, again, being, it would appear to be getting a gain to having
Yep.
$100,000 in pension expense in 2016. So, I was curious as to what was gonna happen in '17?
Well, there's other items in there. The miscellaneous income and expense on the 2015 side, there's other items in there. There may have been some other miscellaneous income that is causing that swing. I think it did swing quite a bit from '15 to '16 on the Gatsby 68 side. I think we actually had, I wasn't here, but I think there was a revenue side. I think we actually had revenue in '15, and then it dropped down to an expense on '16.
Yeah, that would make sense, because I mean, it's a pretty dramatic shift, at least in each of the categories.
And it is. From a regulatory standpoint, if you folks care, the pension expense itself doesn't get factored into our operating income for ratemaking purposes. The PSC was at least smart enough to look at that and say, "You know what? We just really don't care what this does, because you're never really gonna see it. It's just, it's an in and out. You're never gonna see cash in or out." So, they did back that out for regulatory purposes, where we don't show it as an operating side, and it doesn't factor into our actual rate of return. So, at least they're smart enough to do that.
Thank you.
So, overall, water struggles every single year. We're looking probably between two and three months' worth of unrestricted cash, pretty low rate of return. I did request the rate case template from the PSC. I'm hoping to file something by the end of this year. It's time to start looking at water rates again, again, just due to the stagnant growth here, and hopefully we can get something filed by the end of next year, or the end of this year. Any questions on water? Okay. Moving on to wastewater. This wasn't exciting enough. This is actually the least exciting budget we have. Again, you can see the sales here. We're sitting at 0% growth on the wastewater side, as goes water, so goes wastewater. And O&amp;M costs, we really don't have any major expenses like tree trimming or well rehab or anything like that scheduled for 2018, so we're pretty much just seeing about a 2.2% inflation in wastewater O&amp;M for 2018. Same kind of major assumptions, 2.25% across the board for wages, with the exception of a few employees that we talked about. 2% inflationary rate was used for O&amp;M. You'll see wastewater doesn't pay over a pilot, so that didn't factor in here. And depreciation basically stayed on par with what it has been in previous years. The hotel and senior center, I was estimating about $10,000 to $12,000 in net revenue coming in once that's on board. Again, that's an annual estimate, so maybe take that in half, cut that in half, and we may see that in 2018 if those get up and running. Any questions on the wastewater document itself? On the graph, set up the exact same way. You can see, you can kind of see this on the far right, the gap between the trend and what we're estimating for 2017 and 2018 for O&amp;M, really not much of a variance there. We're kind of following the inflation trend with wastewater. Capital expenditures are staying pretty steady, '15, '16, '17, and '18, no big swings there. Once we hit '19, '20, and '21, we're gonna see a pretty big jump in capital expenditures. We're jumping to over $1 million a year on the wastewater side for those three years. Sales in gallons, which is actually the graph below it, for the annual 2012 through 2018, you can see, it's kind of going along the same way that the water was, either dropping or stagnating along the way. So, again, we just leveled off our consumption for '17 and '18. And if you go up kitty-corner from that, this again shows the sales January through August. And again, 2017 is the lowest consumption total we've had through August in the last six years. So, again, that explains the 0% increase in revenue from '17 to '18. Any questions on the water or the wastewater graphs? Okay. Overall, again, it's not all doom and gloom. Wastewater's still gonna have a pretty strong year. We're gonna have about five to six months' worth of unrestricted cash on hand and strong debt coverage. I should mention, all three utilities are gonna have strong debt coverage for 2018, so that's not a worry on that side of things. We are required by the DNR to actually look at wastewater rates every two years. We're scheduled to do that. I'm expecting an increase at this point, basically to eliminate the rate shock of what 19, '20, and '21 could possibly have on the capital expenditure side. The nice thing about wastewater rates is, we're not regulated by the PSC, so we can do step increases, we can increase them gradually, so it's not gonna be this big jump that you're gonna see at one time. We can jump them every six months, just in small increments, just to kind of build up and reduce that impact of what's gonna happen down the road on the capital side. So, any overall questions on wastewater? Okay. This is the last graph I'm gonna go over. Actually, this was, this was actually just more from my comfort level, and I actually thought it was kind of interesting. So, you can see wastewater, water, and electric across the board there. The red lines on the bottom are actually, they represent consumption for 2012 through 2016, January through August. And I was asking myself, does that really matter when I look at January through August consumption compared to estimating out the rest of the year for 2017? So, the red line represents the January through August consumption, and the blue lines up top actually represent the annual consumption for those years. And you can see, they basically line right up. So, wherever we were at through August is pretty much how the year shook out as well. So, it just kind of adds a little more comfort level on how we're estimating 2017 for the rest of the year. And that's all this really represents, so. But that's all I have for the budget. Any questions? Yeah?
You're saying that you're expecting something to happen in 2021?
You're saying that you're expecting something to happen in 2021? Could you refresh my memory that you said that there's a spike or something that's...
For wastewater?
Yeah.
That just refers to the capital expenditure side. So, we've been pretty stable, spending around between $800,000 and $500,000 on capital expenditure side on wastewater from 15, pretty much scheduled through 2018. 19, 20, and 21 are scheduled to be big spend years. So, that's why I'm kind of looking at rates now mainly because we have to, because the DNR says we have to, but also to maybe get something in place just to kind of build up the reserve funds to start paying for those projects in 19, 20, 21, so we don't have that big rate shock two or three years down the road.
And if I could perhaps add just a little bit, right now, of course, we're in the adaptive management program, coming out of Madison Metro and everybody in the, in the Ahara River Basin. But we're looking at our draft permit right now. And permits are normally every five years. This one is shortened and we're focusing now on studies that they want us to do and the potential for ammonia treatment down the road. I think what we're seeing right now is time to do some planning. We think we can meet everything with perhaps limited chemical addition. But the thing about wastewater, adaptive management's really helping us a lot on phosphorus removal, but there are other things that still have to get done. And so, we kind of predict the studies and you're going to see in the wastewater CIP, the amount of studies that we have. There will be more of them and I think, when you think back, it's a plant that went online in, in 1975. We've had a number of major projects over there, so I think we've been keeping it up. But we always had the understanding that ammonia, ammonia would come to the forefront at some time and perhaps some other things as well. The Clean Water Act is, is ongoing and what, what they really want to try and do and what I always thought when I was a regulator is eventually we'll get to a point to where it, it won't be distilled water, but it's going to be pretty close to it coming out of the plants. And that's a good thing, but, but we're looking to the future as to what has to get done.
And, and to add on the rates too, if we're looking at water and wastewater and we're talking about increases, everybody, you know, gets a little, it's a, it's a, it's a point that people get upset about anytime they hear a wa, a rate increase, whether it's water or wastewater. The Utilities Committee folks actually brought this up and it was, it was a good point. So, I went on the PSC website and I looked at water rates and I looked to see where we're at statewide. As of right now, the median, the median residential bill in Wisconsin on the water side is about $26 per month, $26.31. The average residential bill, the average, not the median, is $28.61. And right now, Stoughton is sitting at $21.80. So, even right now, we're lower than the median and the average and that's statewide as a whole on the water side. On the wastewater side, we're kind of in the middle based on the information we have. Wastewater information is a little bit harder to get your hands on because it's not regulated. But just for instance, East Troy, their average monthly, annual cost is about $709. If we look at where Stoughton is, our annual wastewater bills are about $318. Just for reference, my parents live in Tomah. Every time they come down here and look at my bill, they complain because they're paying about $450 a year in wastewater bills. So, even our waste, on the wastewater side, we're still pretty competitive from a statewide perspective.
Last question. I mean, you have a net income with electric of $375, water 83, and wastewater of 80, which is about, I don't know, 440. What, what do you do with that net income?
That, well, electric and water, and again, you have to keep in mind that not all net income is cash. So, it's not like we're just pocketing $375,000 of cash on the electric side. If you look at our, our operating expenditures and everything, you know, depreciation is a non-cash item, things like that. So, cash flow in is a little bit higher than that. We, we do with that money basically what we do through the budget planning. The thing with water, water and electric is the PSC allows us to earn that money and the intent of that is to basically keep the system reliability up and running. And that's the intent of that money.
To use it for upkeep or maintenance or...?
Maintenance, capital assets, anything like that that it needs to go to. And the PSC regulates us. If we were ever to go way above our rate of return, they would start making us give money back. As of right now, we're below our rate of return for both electric and water.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, motion to approve the budget, utility budget?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Engelberger and a second by Trow.
This gets recommended to council then or...?
Yes.
Okay. And any more discussion?
Boss Bob had something.
No, I was just going to touch a little bit on the CIP, but for us, the CIP is really a part of the budget. If I can just touch on it a little bit, you can kind of see, pretty straightforward. We do bring consultants in every five years, talk with staff, look at what's been happening in the system, and then change our priorities. And you're going to see in our CIP, the, really, we're partnering with the city on their projects in 2018 and beyond, and then we do replace some equipment as well.
Any more discussion or questions or...?
So, the motion is actually the, the resolution is in the packet?
No, this is just for the budget. I thought we were going to do the CIP separately, because that's what the resolution is. I think the resolution is just for the CIP, right?
It's, it's, the resolution that's in the packet is, is to approve the utility budget and the five-year CIP. That's what I was assuming you were moving.
Well, I guess I was confused. I, I thought it was a separate thing.
I think you split them at the Utilities Committee.
We did, yeah.
And if you want to split them here or, and I'm ready to touch on the CIP.
Well, it's up to how you want to do it. It's your motion. We can do whatever you want. So, you're saying the resolution does include both?
What's in the packet is the res, yes. That's why I was assuming you were moving.
Well, then, let's, let's go through the CIP then before we do that.
That's fine.
Okay, then you have this in your packet and we'll start out on the, on the electric end. And I'm going to focus really on 2018. Confidence level very high on 2018, 19, and it'll start to get a little fuzzier. But for the most part, you can see that the, the big project for next year is, of course, the West Sub Station has already started and you'll see some groundbreaking there next week. Materials have been arriving for some time. So, the, the distribution side of the West Sub and is, is in here, the West Construction, or the West Sub Station commissioning is in here. That's going to be the actual installation of the materials. The other big project that we're looking at for 2018 is going to be from Acker Road to Hoagie Road on State Highway 138. What you see is, again, with, I think, the 200-plus miles of, of circuits that we have, we always estimate about a half million dollars a year to continue to bring those up to quality service. You may have heard me mention that every year, I think, we look at 20% of our system and inspect. That's a requirement to the Public Service Commission. And then we in turn replace poles, conductors, lightning arresters, or whatever throughout the year. The other bigger item for next year is going to be a, a dump truck that, that electric water and wastewater uses. You can see it's 2008. Mileage isn't as important to us as ours, but, so that'll be the, the CIP for the electric division. Water division, you can see we're on Christie Lane and we're on the east part of the city, Vernon, Academy, and Franklin. And we're partnering again with the city on some street rebuilds there. We're always replacing water meters. Public Service Commission has the requirements. We test so many, we install so many. We're looking at the lead program and the lead replacement program, but like you've heard me mention here, we're still looking at what's going to be coming out of the capital as to what we're going to be able to do. I do know that if we, if we get some authority to work on the private end of the system, there would be a borrowing associated with that. Right now, we don't, we don't qualify for these $300,000 grants that some communities get. So, we're looking at it and hopefully, we're going to be able to legally do something. Small temperature gauge, Tower 2 is the, is the tower up by the high school. And then the MCC upgrade at well 4, that's at the intersection of Robey and Van Buren. I think that well went online in '64, so we're going to replace the electric controls in that. One service truck, 2003, we're looking at replacing next year. On the wastewater end, a project just with wastewater that's going to be in half of Forest Street to do some work from the alley going down to Jefferson. Then we're dovetailing on, on Franklin in the eastern part of the city with the city and with the water utility. Doing some work at our A Street lift station, that'll be the lift station that we think is going to function when the, the Mill Frack property eventually develops. But this is going to be maintenance to keep that lift station operating. I had mentioned adaptive management earlier. Our contribution to that every year right now is $10,000. And then we have our normal sanitary sewer and manhole rehab. Our big expenditure next year is to replace our 2005 jet fac machine. And it's big and it's expensive. And it isn't just used by wastewater. We also use that for hydro excavation. We already have a buyer for it once we see it leave our fleet. The last one is a, is a catch-all regarding technology, looking at the phone system and some other technology issues. No roof replacements or anything else. Normally, that would fall into this.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Cardes? Otherwise, I do have a couple. So, on your, your improvements, you have it projected out through 2022?
Right. We, you know, we present a five-year CIP to the Utilities Committee and I think we follow what the city does right now. We project out a bit, bit further. A lot of people don't think you can do it, but I, we do. And I think in some cases, we look out 20 years. And the thing that we watch for are, I think we touched on a little bit earlier, what the regulations are, Safe Drinking Water Act, Clean Water Act. We know that there's, there will continue to be expenditures, even though we've got a lot of excellent groundwater in the ground and we're doing a very good job of treating it, at the wastewater treatment plant. But again, I think the way the laws are written, we're going to continue to look at potential constituents. Next year, we're one of the utilities in the country that will be looking at 30 exotics, where some contaminants have been found out or found around the country and we're going to be sampling. And I think, first time in my lifetime, we're sampling the parts per trillion. So, the technology is there in a way similar to, for folks that were around when we were in the Superfund program. It was the tetrahydrofuran that got us involved with the Super, Superfund rules. And I think we were the only contributor of tetrahydrofuran in the country at the time. So, everybody's going to continue to look at more, ratchet those numbers down, and we project for what we may very well have to spend.
So, my question is, is, as you project out, and I know you work with Public Works, what can you do to help Public Works and the council for that matter communicate to the constituents of potential projects in their neighborhoods? So, we don't, you know, we get the phone calls and emails every year. I just replaced my driveway apron four years ago and now you guys are tearing up the road.
Yeah, I think, I think we've worked independently in the past and I, but we're talking more and I think we will be working closer together in the future. Case in point, we were sending letters out in January to some customers that were going to be affected. We probably need to be reaching out in January that if the city at the same time is replacing curb and gutter and, and in this case, next year, the projects are going to be full dig projects. I see how those letters can go out in January and maybe they're going to be instead of one page, two. But I think once the budgets are approved, November 14, or your first council meeting in November, if, if we can stay on schedule, we have a pretty good handle on, on putting pencil to paper with the plans. We're going to know the customers that are affected and I think getting letters out, at least with what we're looking at doing in January, is very realistic. And of course, we're going to want to work with Brett and Rodney to make sure it's going to be one concise letter that everybody understands. Then at the same time, just like last year, have the meetings up at the fire station training room where people can come in and talk over exactly what's going to unfold in the project. I'm kind of interested in one and Van Buren in front of my house was constructed, reconstructed last year. Next year, there's a possibility that in my backyard, there's going to be some work and I may get a sidewalk on Jerson Street. I don't know if I'm going to plant a shovel down there or not to get down there and shovel that snow. But if that moves forward, we're going to want to make sure the electric isn't an issue and I don't think water and wastewater will be either from what I see in the system. But I think it'll be important to get those customers to hear early on that they're going to have a sidewalk next year.
Sure. And, and I'm even talking, you know, years beyond that if possible.
Yeah, you, you know, it, it's a good, it's a good idea and like I mentioned with the CIP, we're, we're right on the ball as far as what's going to happen next year. In 2019, things can possibly change and we're going to work with the city whenever there's a dig job. We don't, I don't think we're going to see any premature failures on the water end or wastewater end, but they're going to continue to do projects, in some cases, in the newer part of the city that we won't get involved with. But I think you're going to see us on the water and sewer and concentrating on the inner city yet and continue to go. But we'll try and partner wherever we can.
Sure. And then my other question is regarding some of the, the projects that you have up there. For example, the phone system review.
Yeah.
Do you have the same system that the city does?
No.
Is there any particular reason why you wouldn't want to have the same?
Well, I think whatever technology we're using right now, we probably have had it for a while. So, I think we may be close, but it doesn't, it doesn't hurt me to punch nine in the number rather than punch 367 or whatever. So, I, I think, I think we probably won't be the same. That could be a good question for John, but I think, I think there are some sophistications that are a bit different.
Because one of the things that came up in our discussions when we're doing our council goals is to have more collaboration between our departments.
Yeah.
Specifically, utilities in the city, because we feel that there may be some overlap and in some cases, potential redundancy. And we're just wondering if you're having those types of conversations, because when we're looking at the budget, we see that you're doing a lot of the same work as some of the folks in the city and if there's a way to increase partnerships and efficiencies, we're interested in doing that.
Oh, absolutely. And I would say, all personalities and people aside, I think the partnering that we have had with Public Works this year is phenomenal as compared to past years. And I think that that charge continues to move forward and just like our, our efforts with Public Works, I would expect the same kind of collaboration with John, I think, as we talk things through.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions? All the person might ask you.
Could you tell me how much money you're putting into putting under, putting electrical lines underground this year?
Could you say anything to that?
In the budget itself, it's not specifically identified. I could throw out zero at this point, but it may be buried, some of it may be buried a little bit in Sean's kind of $500,000 annual costs that we do to improve the system and keep up reliability, but it's not a significant amount, if any.
Okay. You're, you're new, so this is my fourth year and this will be the last year I do this, because the next year, I'll motion to take all $500,000 of your net and put it into underground. First year, I asked Director Cardes if he would consider putting underground wires in the old part of the community. And he said, geez, that, that would take a lot of money. I gave him a, I asked, could he do it in 40 to 50 years? And ever since that, that year, I pretty much asked the same question and I get the same response, which is basically right there, zero. My, my patience is at zero. Director Cardes, I'm telling you directly, if you do not budget for it this next year, I will motion to have your entire net put into underground. And I will make every effort I can along the way throughout the year for all your projects difficult until you do. Is that understood?
I hear what you want.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? Otherwise, are you completed with your part of the presentation?
I am.
Okay. We do have a motion on the table?
Let me make the motion.
Okay, Mike's got a motion.
Motion is to authorize and direct proper city officials to approve the Stoughton Utilities 2018 budget and five-year 2018 to 2022 capital improvement plan. And I so moved.
Second.
Okay. There is the motion. So, is there any question on the motion? And it's basically, these are recommendations to the council. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, and that motion carries. The next item on the agenda would be the 2018 executive budget.
Budgetary item, pardon me? Budgetary item needs to be roll call. Do a roll call.
Okay, you can do a roll call.
Aye.
Gittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mijaski.
Present.
Inkleberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sorry. Motion carries on a vote of 10 to zero with the present man.
Okay, thank you. And then the next item would be the 2018 executive budget presentation. Mayor Olson?
Absolutely, thank you. And I want to start by explaining again, as we have since 2012, we're again presenting to you tonight a service-based budget. As a city, we provide services to our citizens, therefore, it is a service-based budget that we provide to you tonight. I want to thank all of our leadership team members for their diligent work with me as we went through the budget again this year. Again, another tight budget, another difficult one to go through, but we bring to you a balanced budget this evening. 2018 initiatives. As our employee compensation plan again is key, since we are a service-based organization, our employees are what we do for our citizens, they are the ones that provide our services. So we're proposing in this budget, an increased wage scale for all employees to remain market competitive. This not only works or is important to us with attracting new employees when they're needed, but it's also critical in retaining employees. I'm proposing a 2.25% adjustment to the Springstead scale in our 2018 budget. We're moving two leadership team members to mid. Remember, last year, we moved three from to mid, which is the market rate, and this year, that's our Public Works Director and our Library Director, that we moved into that market scale. We have a change in health insurance carrier. This is to take advantage of substantial savings for 2018. A key initiative was to merge IT and media services, and also our website budgets, into one technology budget for 2018 moving forward. We're continuing the economic development initiatives. We're again funding the Landmarks Commission, their grant program in 2018 to the tune of $5,000, and 2017, they requested four and are working on those grants as we speak. We're funding an economic development consultant, and this is a project-driven budget line item for $10,000. And again, continuing to fund the redevelopment authority consultant to the tune of $10,000 as well. Before we move forward, I wanted to, if we could back up just, there we go. Before we move forward, I wanted to just take a little step back to history. So in 2017, some things that we were able to include in this budget in 2017 was creating that information technology department, hiring an IT director, an information technology director, and merging that and media services into one. That was a big step for Stoughton. We've needed that and wanted that for many years, and this year in 2017, we're able to make that happen. We hired a full-time mechanic who works side-by-side with our fleet mechanic down there to take care of all of the city's fleet, not just the Public Works fleet. The Landmarks Pilot Program, I talked about just a minute ago, that was their first grant program. The library received funding for Sunday hours, and that was a continuation of their pilot that they had done successfully. Opera House had a few staffing changes as some employee changes took place. And then, of course, we were able to move one of our human resources employees to full time. So in 2017, this current year, we were able to make some big changes, some big steps forward. However, additional staffing that's been requested for our 2018 year, our revenues simply don't support that, unfortunately. So I wanted to present the list, and our leadership team will go through it a little bit more in detail as they walk through their budgets and their budget requests. But this is the list of things that we believe we could, we could provide better services to our citizens if we could, if our revenues could only support these requests. A library intern. Through a grant, we're able to have an intern come and assist at the library at the beginning of the year, but to continue that through September and December of 18 would cost about $4,250. We would like to increase hours for their youth services library assistant, a little over $4,800. We would like, as we struggle a little bit, as in the nationwide trend, to have full-time, or the request is for two full-time fire technicians. We struggle, as the nationwide trend, to have daytime firefighters. It gets harder and harder. We need to continue to look outside the box to be able to provide services to our community as we're not able to fund two full-time fire technicians. Scott, our Fire Chief Wagner, was also looking for some overtime for his fire inspector, and that you won't see in this budget at this time. Chief Leck is looking for two new police officers. Again, those would be great. It's to a tune of $167,000, not something that this budget can support. Also, a new police clerical dispatch person that included benefits, a little over $34,000. Two new Public Works foresters, a little over $147,000. In lieu of the new foresters, we looked at, it would be nice if we could increase contracted services, around $56,000. 2018 is a tough budget. We aren't able to afford that or to make that work in our budget either. A new parks maintenance person, $73,000. In lieu of that parks maintenance person, contracting was looked at for about $30,000. That's also not something you'll see in the budget. Increasing our senior center programming coordinator to full-time, a little bit over $37,000. We talked about fireworks the last few years. We've looked into fireworks and insurance, and our insurance carrier tells us that they will not insure the City of Stoughton to conduct fireworks. So if that's something the council wishes to continue with, we'd need to look at a different way, not only to fund it, but to ensure that type of an event. Our Economic Development Director, both CACP and Personnel are meeting the beginning of November to talk about what that could look like, and along with that, what that might cost. We don't know that at this point. HR would like to have some assistance in their department as well. So if you put all the options together, and I want to be upfront, so that all of our elders, as well as folks that might be watching and listening tonight, understand, we knew that we couldn't have 725,000 worth of new employees. That's not what we're asking for tonight. What we were looking for is, if you could provide the best service you can imagine right now for next year, what would it take? And that was the question I asked our leadership team members to tell us. What would it take? Present to me a static budget, and by static, I mean, what will it cost in 2018 to provide the exact same services you provided in 2017? Once we have that number, then take that next step for me and tell me, as you'll see as they go through their options tonight, what would make your department just that little bit better? What do you think you would need to provide that next step in services? And this is the list of things that is that next option list. And they'll talk that through with you as we go through each independent budget. So here's our static budget. Changes to our normal operating costs. I'm proposing that we adjust our compensation plan by 2.25% to remain market competitive, again, to attract and retain those employees. This is about $156,000. Our staff is how we provide our services to the City of Stoughton. Our staff provide quality services to our city, and this is what we need to continue to provide those services. We've talked about, and you approved, a health insurance plan change. That's a reduction of 130, just about $135,000 over that original number that was brought to you last year for 2018. Our dental insurance will increase an estimated 2%. We're not, haven't narrowed down that amount yet, but it's about 2%. Workers' compensation has increased by $30,000. General and liability insurance has increased $6,000. All of these insurances were not different than anybody else. All insurance costs are going up for next year. We're asking in this budget to increase the election budget for next year. Next year, we'll have four elections, whereas this year, we only had two. We're also asking to increase the amount that our pool workers and our chief inspectors are paid, and that's to remain competitive with our area communities and keep those best workers here in Stoughton. We're increasing legal services to the tune of $10,000. We've used Stafford and Rosenbaum more this year than we have in the past, and I predict that to stay the same for next as well. I'm asking for an increase in city funding for the youth center of $5,000. Right now, the City of Stoughton pays about $21,000 for our salaried person down at the youth center. The rest of those salaries and wages are fundraised through the Friends of the Stoughton Area Youth Center, more specifically fundraised through the Bryant Foundation. The Bryant Foundation has always said that they wish to help us, to assist the City of Stoughton in providing that just a little bit better, but they never want to replace what a city budget should do. So they're asking that we increase by $5,000 for next year. As you know, they make generous donations to many of our departments through the City of Stoughton. Our debt service, we've talked about this before, but there'll be an increase in 2018 of $286,000. We've also had some changes to the revenue, and that allows us to bring a balanced budget. Net new construction for 2017 was at 1.75%. Remember, last year, we were at 1.9%. But 1.75 means an increase of $123,300. We've had an increase in building and electrical and plumbing fees to about $15,000. An increase in our police department fees, $10,000. Here's that increase in the Friends of the Stoughton Area Youth Center contribution, And an increase in court penalties and fines of $6,000. This year, next year, we'll see a decrease in utility pilots for those very same things that Jayman and Bob talked to us about, a decrease in $60,000 moving forward. There's a decrease in the state expenditure restraint program to the tune of $7,600 for us for next year, and a decrease in motor vehicle fees, $7,000 for the City of Stoughton. As I said, we bring to you a balanced budget where our revenues equal our expenditures. Again, this wasn't easy. This was, it's difficult when you're looking at reducing items by $1,000 to bring that gap to close. Our operating gap when we began was $173,369. Through the diligent work of our leadership team, we've been able to close that gap. We'll continue the implementation of the Springstead study, proposing a 2.25 wage scale adjustment, right in line with Dane County and other communities in our area, bringing two leadership members to midpoint, which is market. Again, we need to keep, we've attracted, and now we need to keep those quality leadership team members. And it's also bringing our library employees into the study. They had not yet been brought into the Springstead study. We'll do that in 2018. This includes a levy increase of $409,432. Debt service, $286,100. And net new construction of $123,32. So we'll continue to use levy dollars to fund most large equipment to support the daily operations of the city. We know that our equipment fund simply doesn't fund a new fire truck, so we'll need to borrow for that as usual. It simply doesn't fund some of the larger items, but for most of our large equipment, we're able to do that with our levy and within our revenues, so that's a good story. Tammy's going to walk us through some of the rest of this.
As you may recall, in September, the Common Council adopted the CIP for 2018, and in 2017, we borrowed for most street and capital equipment purchases for both 2017 and 2018. So what I've done is taken the 2018 list. It does include a proposed borrowing for the Public Works facility. I have $8.3 million in here, and of course, that's an estimate. We didn't know what the final price might be. And then forecasted through the next five years, the total capital improvements. In 2018, when you add everything up, it comes to $10.6 million in building equipment, streets, stormwater, water, and sewer utility projects. This does include the city continuing to borrow $400,000 each year to support the large equipment purchases that you had adopted, I believe, in 2017. And then, just a final point, 2019 to 2022 cost our estimates, and they may increase or decrease. Some of the years that are further out, sometimes they don't have everything included. Sometimes we usually concentrate on the years that are like within the next two or three years. So we'll work to try and develop that better going forward. Here's a list of the proposed borrowing for 2018. It includes the Public Works facility, and I did put in the four options that were, had been presented, as well as the refinancing of the note anticipation notes from 2015 or '16. It comes to about $4.1 million. Do you want to take this one?
All right. We saw you all cheating and looking ahead when you came and sat down at your seats tonight. This was on your seat, so it's the bottom-line projection, as we like to bring out every year. The 2017 tax levy has a 1.755% net new construction, equals $123,332. Our levy increase includes a city tax rate decrease of 4%. Our mill rate for next year is decreased by 34 cents. So the total tax change is a reduction of $34 per $100,000 home. And you might say, she's just been standing up here saying all the things we'd like to have, but we can't, and now you're going to decrease taxes. Well, that's all this strange little levy limit that we have, as well as our assessed value, which we were fortunate to have that raised this last year. So with an increase in our assessment and our levy limits, it's how the numbers figure out. Tammy, you're going to have to help explain the.
And the assessment ratio, we asked the assessor to try and help us establish what the assessment ratio might be. We do not have the final numbers until November, so right now, we're merely estimating that that's where it's going to be. Prior year, I believe it was around 99%. So taking that information, you take the proposed levy and divide that into the assessed value assumption, and that's how we come up with your $8.12 tax rate for 2018.
So let's look at the history. What has Stoughton's tax history looked like? So we started all the way back with 2009. We had a 2.94% increase, and this year, again, as we said, it's a decrease of 4.02%. We know that next year, we'll have a different picture. We're going to be borrowing for the Public Works facility, and that will change how that all looks next year. But for 2018, we can enjoy a decrease in our taxes. So we bring you a balanced budget tonight. We're going to have some workshops coming forward, and I think we'll come back to this slide at the end of the evening. But we'd like to take you through tonight. You have the green sheets in front of you at the table. Tammy's going to put it up on the screen, and we'll walk our way through some of that for you this evening. Go get mine.
So the first sheet that you received this evening shows the Common Council. As you can see, there have been no proposed increases in the council itself. It remains at $47,005. The judicial branch, the judge is not present this evening, however, there are some slight decreases, mainly due to health insurance. There was an adjustment where the insurance was shifted to the spouse, so there was a savings here of approximately $5,900. Otherwise, everything else remained the same in their budget.
Is that full screen?
Yeah, the problem is each sheet is.
Oh, it's all independent?
Yep.
I see, okay.
That might be too big. The next is legal, and as the mayor explained earlier, we looked at a $10,000 increase in attorney services based on the current year's services that have been provided, or a 9.95% increase.
Okay, and the next one, this is the mayor's office. Okay, and the next one, this is the mayor's office. The $100,340 includes the mayor's salary and benefits. It also includes Dane County Cities and Villages Association and League of Municipality Membership, as well as the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce membership for the city of Stoughton. Commitment to Community, community commitment, I read it backwards, that is our Hall of Fame, that we induct one new person into the Stoughton Hall of Fame every year, as well as celebrating the volunteer and the businessperson of the year. And now, I'm going to step aside.
The next slide is the clerk's office. And overall, in licensing, we saw a reduction, and there is a proposed increase in elections due to going from two elections in 2017 to four potential elections in 2018. A reduction in clerk administration, a lot of that had to do with health insurance savings. Council and committees, mayor and assessor, slight increases there. shows financial and accounting services, and treasury management remaining the same, for an overall increase of $6,500 or 3.53%. Yes?
What's the $4,000 on the assessor? Does the change from this year to next year?
The $4,000 on the assessor...
Yeah, we had zero.
A lot of it has to do with just reallocation of time, and when you reallocate a time, benefits go as well. And we also, I don't know, Lana, I think there was an increase in some board of review time.
It doesn't look like we've accounted any of Lana's time toward helping the assessor or putting together that board of review. So this $4,000, to me, it represents how much time Lana spends putting together the board of review, the open book, all those types of things. It's all part of our budgeting for outcomes. How much does each service cost? And it costs part of her time to put that together.
So again, the answer to my question then, in terms of the $4,000 increase, it really isn't an increase you weren't capturing, perhaps what her time was in 2017?
Previously. It's more of a reallocation between line items.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Greg, did you have a question?
Wasn't the, wasn't it included in the assessor's contract before?
Well, the assessor's contract is for the cost of the assessor. It doesn't include Lana's time to put that information together and to coordinate those meetings and things.
Any other questions, or, okay. Moving on to elections, and Lana can answer questions if we have some. In this budget, we're currently proposing, again, four elections rather than two in 2017, as well as a small increase to the poll workers and the poll inspectors. Currently, poll workers are not required to work in their own community. They can go anywhere in the county. And in order to be competitive with some of our surrounding communities, we're recommending this small increase in order to keep the people who have all the training. Yes, Regina?
On this sheet, I couldn't find where Stoughton is listed of what we're currently paying the poll worker and the chief inspector and what we're increasing it to. Could that be explained?
Lana, is that okay?
So currently, we pay our election inspectors $8 an hour. We pay our chief election inspectors $8.50 an hour. The difference between the two is the chief election inspectors are ultimately responsible for your polling location. They have received the most training, and they are the ones that oversee everything on Election Day. We didn't put them in the spreadsheet. This was just to show the other municipalities that we had contacted about their rates for their poll workers and election inspectors. But we are proposing an increase for our election inspectors to, instead of being $8 an hour, to $10 an hour, and our chiefs, instead of $8.50, being $11 an hour.
I believe the total increase was $2,500, or, I'm trying to remember, $10,000?
I believe it was about $4,000.
$4,000, something like that, yeah. So the rest of that cost is the increase in the actual two additional elections required. Any other questions on elections? Moving on to finance. You'll see the top three items, the RDA, the shared taxi service, economic development, clerk administration. There's several reductions throughout here. The number of that has to do with a change in the salary for the finance director. There was a reduction there, as well as the savings in health insurance, and then looking at our allocations again between these items and reevaluating where our time is spent. You'll note that on elections, it shows a huge increase because all three of us in the finance department are helping out at the various polling places, and with four elections, that's why that number increased. Moving on to page two. We have council and committee staying at the same level. City attorney services, those increased, well, we actually started charging for that, working with the attorney on issues. And then financial and accounting services saw an increase of $8,500. Treasury management, again, this reallocation and shifting of time dropped $24,000, and part of that 20, oh, no, not that line item, I'm sorry. Debt service dropped about $9,300, and then IT dropped $25,375. And what that was due to, with John coming on board, there were a number of software contracts that were paid by the finance department's, this line item for IT. So what we did was we took that amount and shifted it into the new IT media services budget area. So you'll see some increases in his line items that are offset by some savings here. What we're trying to do is make it more of a central IT, and we're getting there where we're taking costs from various other budgets where people used to do those jobs and shifting it gradually to John. So we may find more in the budget and then take care of that next year.
And just a clarification, then, the count 414, the city attorney services, that's once again, they're charging, charging the department's time or trying to...
Yes, the department's time with working with the attorney.
So that number is in addition to the number we saw earlier?
It's our staff time for working with the attorney, yes. The attorney charges you saw before were just specifically the attorney's time.
Okay, and this...
But he bills us.
This is for your time?
This is staff time, right.
Okay. And my question then is, is there any other attorney time that's charged into another area? For example, the RDA or the planning?
Right now, RDA costs are a separate fund, a separate budget, and his time, when he does work on specific RDA issues, is billed to the RDA's RDA fund.
Okay, and I haven't looked that far ahead. Is that number included in this budget?
No, it's not in here, but what I plan on doing is trying to get some of those other funds and present that information to either our next meeting or the one following.
Okay, because I'd be real interested in seeing what the total cost is for the attorney for everything they do. And then the other part of that would be to see if there's any other communities that have an in-house attorney and what the cost of that would be in comparison.
The only other downside to that, Alderman Swadley, is that sometimes the in-house attorney doesn't specialize, and you still have to go outside and, because I know we do utilize outside personnel, labor attorneys, for specific purposes as well, and they're a specific line item.
Right. So what I'm looking for specifically is just our general attorney costs associated, you know, and whether or not it would be advantageous for us to at least look at that option. I don't know if it is or not, because I don't have any information, but if you could provide that, I think that would be helpful.
I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
Any other questions on finance?
We have some over here.
Along those lines, I think it would be helpless with what Alderman Swadley is saying is that it's not just, if I understand right, what their attorney fees, it's just not one single person, because he has this whole office of experts. And so I guess, when you break it down, maybe have how many actual attorneys we've paid during that year. So if we make a decision to have an internal attorney or even starting to entertain that, it's actually not just one person, it's multiple people, because attorneys specialize in different aspects.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, please continue.
Okay. Moving on to the assessor. This budget stayed the same. The contract runs through the end of '18, so there was no change at 47.5. Oh, Lana?
Contract stood through 2020.
Oh, I apologize, 2020. Thank you. Our next budget is HR risk management, and I know HJ is here to listen on that. Let me just blow this up here.
Got it?
Yep.
So as Mayor Olson had stated, we did prepare a static budget, and that's what's presented here. I did have $9,000 in for a part-time LTE to help with employee self-service, but that's been put aside. So looking at personnel, that is pretty flatline. That includes the increase in 2.25% for employee wages. Under the insurances, risk management, you're looking at a 14.2% increase, and that's where you're looking specifically at the workers' compensation with a $30,000 increase there. We had 2017 activity at $153,000, and we're projecting at 2018 at $159,000, so that's where that difference is coming from, even though our experience mod did go down. So the amended budget was $129, so a grand total there of 14.2%. Other expenses, we're going to stay static there, and then grand total for the budget is $569,251. And I just wanted to quick go through on the health insurance piece here. We did have that savings of $134,663 over the original renewal. And then the dental, we're still waiting for final numbers on that, but we are looking at 2%, and that's what we've put in there as of right now. And then just a reminder here on the compensation plan overall, I just want to speak to that a little bit as the HR director. The employees, you know, this change, like we talked about last time, to courts, that's a major change for employees, and there's $134,000 in savings there. And Mayor Olson had talked about with that 2.25%, we're looking at a total cost in the budget of $156,000. So we've already offset that by the savings that are there in the health plan. So I really hope that you take that 2.25% to heart and understand the importance of market competitiveness and keeping our Springstead study competitive so we can both attract and retain staff. It's very important. So again, that's how I was looking at the 2.25 when they said that there was a gap there. Being able to come forward with that health insurance, the employees have made a change, really helped on that bottom line with making the change to courts, but the 2.25 would be a great way for us to be able to retain staff and attract staff. Any questions?
Go ahead, Alderman Swadley.
If you could, just following up on the question that was, before you were, again, talking about attorneys, if you could also break out your costs, because we know that's a separate, you use a separate firm...
Sure.
Just as a part of our overall reports, you could see what our costs are.
Absolutely.
So I have a couple of questions and comments, and first of all, congratulations for the health savings. I know that's...
Thank you.
...a lot of work, and it's a lot of stress in order to communicate that to staff, but it's an important thing that just needs to be done, so thank you for doing that. Couple of questions. I guess the first one is, is have you explored any opportunities of partnering with utilities on some of the services that HR is providing? I mean, what is your, I guess, what is your relationship with utilities as it relates to employee issues and services such as payroll?
Yeah. Tom and I are smiling at each other, because that is one of the, and tasks as well, items that the Personnel Committee has tasked me with. So what we're doing at this point, we're getting quotes from different firms to come in and take a look at that with an objective standpoint and explain to us what makes most sense for the payroll system. So that piece, we are already starting to work on, and depending upon what we find out from that study, the Personnel Committee at that time will direct me as to what they want for next steps. In regards to, I think you said, personnel discipline, they are completely rolled into our compensation plan. I know you heard Jamin tonight talking about 2.25. Those other exceptions that were made, council's already approved, so we've worked exclusively together on that, as well as implementing the Springstead plan there for their staff. Same thing with any type of disciplinary or any hiring, firing that takes place down there. I'm involved 100% in that with them. So they have involved HR exclusively.
So then, my final question is, does this pay increase, does that include a performance-based pay, or is this across the board?
No. What we're doing here is this is keeping the Springstead, the study that you had seen with the scales, you know, how we had the grade levels and the steps. What this is doing is keeping that scale market competitive. So we're not giving anybody an increase in steps. What we're doing is doing an increase across the board to keep the scale itself competitive.
Because I guess my understanding from last year is that you were going to implement a performance-based pay program this year, and just wondering where we're at, what's going on with that?
Absolutely. What we said is we would look into a performance-based plan. What we ended up spending this year working on with the Personnel Committee is how do we update the Springstead study? Right now, what we're working on is coming forth with a review system, and we're working with CivMIC on that. We have Ann scheduled from Springstead to come back in in November, and we'll be talking with her about options of how do we move staff through. We don't know if performance-based is going to work for the city, and we talked about that before. It was just the one that kept coming up as the best option that everybody was talking about. We haven't done any research on that. So that's our goal for 2018, is to look at that and also to implement those performance reviews, so those are at least happening, and that the managers are trained on how to accurately give the performance reviews. So if we move that direction, we've already laid the groundwork.
Sure. I think it's important, whether you move that direction or not, you do the evaluations, because, you know, how else are people going to get the communication they need?
You bet.
To improve and at least get the recognition they deserve for the work that they do. So I'm real interested in that. Have you had any indication from Springstead on whether or not other municipalities are going in that direction?
Yeah. I had a conversation with Ann today, who is our consultant from Springstead, and we were talking about what our other area community is doing. And it depends upon what we're looking at providing when it comes to compensation as an overall plan for employees. What do we have budget-wise? More importantly, what the city of Stoughton, we're thinking, needs to look at in 2018 is, we have employees sitting within the scale, but we don't know if they're in the right place. In fact, I can tell you, they're probably not at the right place, because if you remember last year, what we were doing, I'm sorry, the first year, was moving people to minimum. We had employees that weren't even at the minimum pay. As you heard the mayor say tonight and talk about last year, we were moving just the leadership group to midpoint, which is quote-unquote "market." We know that our staff falls on both sides of that midpoint, and we need to figure out how do we have those employees appropriately graded and stepped. We know the grades are correct now. We went through that this year. Now we're looking at, is their step appropriate? We have a 20-year veteran who's sitting at step two. Is that correct? Well, what are the factors that determine what is a step two? And that's what we need to determine for 2018.
Well, and the way I look at it is, you know, the bottom line is, is, you know, are we getting the productivity and the level of work that we expect out of them employees, you know, steps aside? And I think that's something that concerns me about just doing the, across the board, because there's some people that deserve more than 2.25%, quite frankly, and there's several, I'm sure, that maybe don't deserve the 2.25%. So that's what kind of bothers me, because when you talk about retention, we want to retain, you know, our best and brightest people, and if we're not rewarding them at the level that they've earned, that's really difficult for those types of people, you know, to handle that. And so I want you to, you know, I'm sure you take that into consideration as you're going through these things.
Absolutely.
And obviously, we're limited with our budget, but at the end of the day, if we're giving out raises, that should raise the expectation bar and the level of service that... that the employees that we're rewarding are being able to provide.
Right.
And we want to give you the tools to do that, but we also, you know, we're told last year that you're going to be working toward this, and it seems like, I know it's been a busy year, but you haven't got there yet, and we've invested a lot of money into this process, and we want to, I want to support to finish it, but if we have the same conversation again next year, it's going to be really a difficult pill for me to swallow.
Right. And Tim, that's not the goal. What ended up happening this year is we implemented, through Council's approval, the grading, to go back and look at the grading. So that implementation of that process had to take place, and then, once we received all the information from those employees and the job description updates, we focused on correcting the grades. So, or looking at and validating the grades. Now, now that that's been done, as I just said a couple minutes ago, we're going to look at now how do we move people forward? Do we really start with where they're at and we're tied to this, is it pay-for-performance? What is it? I think more importantly, and as an employee, I personally feel more importantly, am I really where I'm supposed to be within the steps? That's more important to me than any increase you're going to give me. So whether or not those steps, I'm appropriately, in the appropriate step, it's more important that that step scale is accurate and market competitive, and then my placement into it. So I get where you're going, saying, yes, we need to be able to reward employee A over employee B who's performing better, but I think more importantly, we need to get our ducks in a row, making sure that the grades are accurate, then making sure that the employees are in the appropriate step, then figuring out how do we move them forward. This is not going to be an overnight process, one, two years. This is, if we're going to roll it out appropriately, we need to look at each step within it, and that is not something that we took into consideration or was even brought up to us when we started the Springstead program two years ago. The request for reconsideration was part of the initial rollout and never part of a discussion saying, in the future, if somebody doesn't agree, we're going to do this. Well, it got brought to our attention, it got brought to personnel, it got approved, so we had to go through that process, therefore slowing things up. So like I said, it's November, we're meeting with Ann, we're going to get the plan for 2018. What do we do?
I guess the other point I would make as far as for recruiting, not all positions are, the market is different for different positions within the organization because of the specialized services that people provide. Obviously, in the area of public safety, you know, the market is dictating that we're going to just have to pay more money for public safety people because there's a shortage, there's difficulty, there's a lot of competition, and some of the other areas, there might not be as much competition for them positions. So how do we balance that in order to take care of, you know, of those folks as well? And you could say the same thing about utilities.
Yeah. One of the really important things to think about is there's a labor shortage, period. So absolutely, it's difficult to recruit in the police market, but it's equally as difficult for me to recruit for the front desk as it is to get a decent forester in here. So we're feeling it across the board. You talk to any private or government sector, and it's the same issue.
Yeah, you can talk to me, I can tell you.
People are jumping for small amounts, and it's that just a little bit to get ahead, and it goes back to post, pre-911, when employees were jumping all over. 911 happens, the market tightens up. It's very cyclical when it comes to human resources, and we're going back into the, it's getting to be a tight labor market, it's difficult to recruit, and it's difficult to retain that staff, and that's why we need to look at, how do we make sure that those employees coming in and those employees that are here working day in and day out feel rewarded? And I think that's why it's important, we've taken the step back, looked at the grades and made sure that they're accurate. We did make some changes.
Yeah, I understand that.
And it's going to be tough, but we have to show that we're making those steps forward and that we care about that. And I think one of the things right now, that's that really, like you said, tough pill to swallow for employees, they just took, in their mind, many of them, a major hit. They've got to go out and find new healthcare, new providers. And I know it was the right thing for us to do, and I still stand behind that, because if it were my checkbook, that's the way I'd spend that money. But I would ask that you look as a council as a whole at that 134 and say, okay, now we can balance that against 156 that we've already, we've already taken that from the employees and forced a change. I'm just asking that you think about that as we're going through these difficult times. It's tough for us to retain staff. And one of the things that's always been there for government employees is what's called the golden handcuffs, and we're losing that. Because our standard compensation, our benefits are really good, but our compensation's down here. City of Stoughton has never been known to be market or above-market. We're sub-market, and we're trying to get up to that market level. And that can be proven by looking at where the employee is compensated in comparison to midpoint. So yes, we have some staff that's over, but we have a lot of staff that's sitting on the lower end. So just food for thought there.
And I totally get that, and part of my struggle is with the state of Wisconsin, because they've made it really difficult for municipalities to be competitive and to retain their employees, especially when we have as many needs as was pointed out by the mayor tonight, and we have this cap, a cap that we were locked in on because we were frugal.
Right.
So we're being punished for that. So, you know, I guess one of the challenges, I think, for us as a council and as a community is to be a voice, and I know we have, you know, our lobbyists and whatnot, but I think it's time for municipalities to step up and say, you know, state of Wisconsin, you're doing us an injustice. We can't provide the services that the people in our community want and deserve, and we're not happy about it. So that's my two cents worth, so thanks for what you're doing.
One other quick thought, thank you, Tim. One other quick point I wanted to make, I don't know if you guys go to QuickTrip, but I got a flyer in the mail, and it was a recruiting flyer. $14 an hour, $1,000 sign-on bonus for full-time, 500 for part-time. That's tough for me to hire people at WSTO, to hire limited-term employees that work in the public works. That's really tough for us to compete against. You know, a CSO, those rates are driving up. McDonald's is paying more, Walmart is paying more, so makes it tough for all of us. And that's why I say, you know, we made the right choice, and if it were my own checkbook, I definitely would have made the change with the health insurance. But let's stay competitive here, guys, so we're not out constantly recruiting and wasting that money long-term that we've invested in somebody to train them. Let's keep them here, let's give them a reason to stay.
Aldo Person Trul.
AJ, you also talked about the fact that you and your staff support the utilities and the like. My question is, are we able to backcharge, or do you currently backcharge a percentage of, a significant share of your time to it?
There is an administration fee, I'm sorry, there is an administration fee that the City of Stoughton has charged utilities, and I'm digging for it. I don't have it right now, but I can bring them back.
Something like 68,000 or?
Yeah, Tammy probably has it closer than.
Again, given our earlier discussions this evening and operationally and the things, I guess I would encourage you to make sure that we are appropriately charging for all of the time and effort that we put into that, so it comes out of our day-to-day budget.
We currently charge sewer utility administration of 15,400, electric utility administration of 35,400, and water utility administration of 13,200.
Thank you.
Aldo Person Trul.
Thanks, Tim. Did I, did I hear you say that we had a $30,000 increase in workers' comp?
That is correct.
Is that based on claims filed or?
No. What I had explained there, Lisa, is in 2017, we had an amended budget at 129,725. I'm not sure where that number came from, but our activity in 2017 is at 153,506, so that's why you're seeing that increase of 30,000.
Okay.
Our experience modification, which is the number that shows what our claims are, actually went down.
Okay.
So there was not claims activity to support that, it's just that there was an amendment made into the budget that that number dropped.
Thank you, I missed it.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions, or otherwise we'll continue.
There's just one thing. When I was going through and putting in the wages for the three leadership positions from last year, that received an increase to mid-level. For some reason, the 17 wages weren't at the right number. So you'll see that, it says here a 10, or a 9.7% increase or a 10.7 overall increase. There was a difference in, specifically for AJ was one of them, of almost, what was it?
$9,000.
Yeah, $9,000. And then in the senior center, it was about $6,800. So for some reason, those numbers were off, I just wanted you to know that it's not, she's not receiving that much of an increase. For some reason, the 17 number was off.
Any other questions?
I hope that's not a reflection of my department that she had to go to a higher font size for you to see it. But as you can see by the police department's budget, it's pretty static as well. The bulk of the increase is in personnel costs, that we are the largest department in the city, so that can be expected. What I'll do is just highlight a couple of areas on the line items that don't appear on your screen that kind of drive the percentage increases in emergency services, patrol, and investigative services. First and foremost, one of the areas that we've seen an increase going into 18 is in our telephone budget. We're reliant on our service contracts with a multitude of different providers for internet access, GPS access, all those other things that get included with the technology that now we're now using in the squad cars and that reliability. The other part of it is, is that we provide, we have a couple of charter lines which are dedicated, which cost us more than the average business line would cost for charter, and we are, we're looking at those going forward, but that the telephone budget was pretty much underfunded the last couple of years, and we tried to get that up nearer to what the actual costs are going to be. We also have money in there for a backup system, that's our Sprint item, that's in our telephone budget. That provides our backup when everything else goes down, usually that system's reliable for communication. We can also use it as a two-way communication, similar to a radio system. The other area where we saw a significant increase in the line items would be in the uniform allowance, and that's actually for uniform equipment. We have looked at and been concerned about the lack of personal safety equipment that we have for our officers for special event details that they might get involved in, and a better way to put it at is it is somewhat considered riot gear, but it is for special events. We've, you know, seen a lot of stuff going around in the country, and protests can spring up for a variety of reasons and for a variety of causes, but we just are unprepared to even send our officers into a neighboring jurisdiction with a proper amount of equipment to assist if we get called on. The good news of that, I mean, that carries the bulk of our increase in our uniformal budget, but the good news is, is that just today, a grant opportunity is surfacing from the Emergency Man, Wisconsin, WEM, Wisconsin Emergency Management regarding setting up some of these and outfitting these teams in regional aspects. We are planning on teaming with the four other agencies that we train with on a regular basis of our training consortium and writing a grant, so our expenditure may actually go down in this area by the end of, by the middle or end of next year with some grant opportunities. But those are particularly two areas that kind of drive our costs, otherwise we have modest cost increase. More inflationary than anything is a slight bump in the training budget to accommodate the use of training facilities. Those fees are continuing to increase, but for the most part, we're pretty stagnant. I do want to mention that we did put in for two officers and a halftime clerical position this year. We're getting pretty close to being desperate for these two officer positions. I can tell you from our PM shifts, they're pretty much running call-to-call right now, which means there's no extra time to do traffic enforcement or anything like that. That's also becoming the norm on the day shift as well, and so it's becoming very difficult to keep up the demand of services. We have a lot of requests for traffic enforcement in the city. The only way we're able to do traffic enforcement is when we are lucky enough to get grants from the Department of Transportation, and also when we put people out on overtime to specifically do traffic. And it's the sad part of everything that we do, when you're call-driven, you just don't have time for discretionary things and for officers to have the time and go out to dedicate to traffic enforcement. That's a real concern to us, and we're also experiencing some real crunches on the investigative side. We've had a third investigator position in the department for many years. When we had our last retirement about two years ago, that the third detective was not replaced. We've carried the place marker in the budget for the last couple of years to have that third detective back. We haven't filled it because the needs in patrol have been so great, we just haven't had the opportunity to put another body back into investigation. So we are working our current two investigators to the max, and it's going to be even more concerning going into the future. As we start to expand, we start to have more calls, and our calls for services are not decreasing, they're increasing every year. So I just wanted to put that kind of information out there for you.
Aldo Person Trul.
Thank you. And this question is either to the chief or to the mayor. I see on the memo that you indicate that you were offering, if there were an opportunity to bring on the two extra officers, you had capturing some additional savings, and in your memo, the indicated cost for these two officers was 111,800. In the document here, we're seeing it's 166. Is that, is the 166, does that represent a perhaps more annualized cost, or, I'm trying to understand the difference in the $50,000 between what it would?
The easiest way to explain that is we had proposed a reduction of $20,000 in the overtime budget.
Right.
If we got to, and then the rest of the $34,000 was money we anticipated that was over-budgeted in 2017, but as it turned out, it's being sucked up with increases from 2018. So it actually kind of vaporized on us pretty quickly and non-existent, and so that's where that came in, and so that was some bad information that we were working on, that this wasn't there, the $34,000 addition.
But $20,000 in overtime would perhaps?
Absolutely. The $20,000 in overtime is something that we could do if we had the two officer positions, but then I think what you do is you take that 166 minus 20, 146.
Right, I'm just trying to get a good understanding of that. And then frankly, the other question to you, and you've already addressed it, was going to be if not now, when? I mean, this is something that we have been deferring and deferring, and we keep kicking the can down the road here, and we've obviously added additional property, we've added additional businesses. While we're talking about getting additional revenue for the new senior project and the hotel, it clearly are going to generate additional calls.
Yeah.
I'm struggling as to why, and I guess I would, we'll certainly be talking to my colleagues here and encouraging us to put this back in the budget, but I just need to know what the real number is.
Yeah, and the real number would be about, I'm pretty confident we could reduce overtime funding if we had the additional staffing. The other aspect that we look at is, we mostly rely on the call data as an indicator of where we are, what we need for staffing levels, but if you look at it period numbers-wise, the national average is one per 500 population. So that tells you where our sworn staff should be, closer to 26, and we're currently at 22, so.
Overtime is also that difficult base.
It is.
Where it seems to be or looks like we can reduce it, but we haven't been able to do that. So that's just something I want to look at those numbers a little closer for you, will we need to keep that in mind?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm looking for, is the best estimate. And then the other part is, is there any additional costs that we would have to bring those two extra officers on in terms of either added vehicles or other charges? I want to make sure I understand that if we talk about, what is our real cost if we were to go ahead and add two more staff people?
Yeah, right now, we have enough fleet to adequately do that. Again, that may not be the case going forward in the future, but right now, we could absorb an additional two officers in. It takes, actually, to increase one officer per shift, it takes 1.5 personnel. So if you look at a, so for example, our 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM shift, if I wanted to add one more officer assigned to that shift, it takes 1.5 personnel to do that.
I was, I was told that it takes basically six persons, six staff, or six police officers to effectively put one person 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
At a minimum, yeah, at a minimum, so.
Aldo Person Engelberger, and then Hersh.
Thank you. Chief, question on, this could, not only for you, but other departments too. It could be for Rodney, it could be for Opera House IT. too. It could be for Rodney, it could be for Opera House IT. Did we, were we not charging for Pat's time towards IT prior?
No, it was just absorbed in our budget. I mean, he just did that as part of his regular duties. And-
I would have expected like a back out.
Yeah, no, it, it-
There was one back out.
Yeah, yeah, there was one back out, about $11,000.
About $11,000 transferred. Yeah.
And that was for IT?
That was for IT. Yep. And that was transferred into the IT media account.
I didn't see it on the numbers here. I mean-
Well, that's, yeah.
The hard part is, we didn't, we didn't like take off part of Pat.
Yeah.
We just simply allowed him to have, I shouldn't say simply. By, by having John on, it gives Pat more time to do police lieutenant work-
Right.
-and, and not so much IT work.
And actually, the, the reduction came out of the operating side of the budget and not really on the personnel side of the budget, because the personnel aspect didn't change, but the operating did as a result of that.
And the more, more that John becomes acclimated as our, as our ET guy, and the way that I talk about him, but the more time then that Pat has to do police department things, and you know, pull him out of working on the squad laptops all the time, pull him away from doing IT, that's what John's going to do. So Pat can do more time with police-
And I understand that, but the thing is, I, I can't tell that from here by looking at this.
The line item might be able to, once you get that.
Hopefully, are we going to get a line item at some point?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, yeah.
The other thing that doesn't show here too is, as the chief mentioned, grants. Because those are all in the revenue area. Those are all, have to be treated separately. So he does get grants for overtime, and, but yet, these are all the expenses. That's what you're seeing.
Alder Person Hirsch?
Kind of going on to what Alder Person Trul is saying, I mean, I'd like to see, because we have been kicking you guys down the way, and, and public safety to me is like one of the most important things in the whole city. And so, and I know we're coming up with fire next, but what would happen, I mean, is it, if somehow we were able to get you one police officer in this year, and then try to budget it for another one next year, would that help? I know you were trying to say that, you know, one equals 1.5, but if we can just start going forward as opposed to like kicking it further, at least trying to go halfway there, would that help a lot?
Every position that we get would help immensely. I mean, because it frees up and the, the sad part is when you're at minimal staffing levels like we are, I mean, we can't even fill a vacation request without usually generating overtime to, to fill that request or other mechanisms, or you rob from one shift to put another officer on a different shift with a switch. So it, every, every officer that you add, it has an impact on that. And it allows us to absorb some of that and also keep those staffing levels at a consistent basis. Our, kind of our internal minimum is, is two patrol officers on at all times, all three shifts, with an additional patrol officer between 7:00 PM and 3:00 AM. That again is then augmented by the supervisor, that they work different shifts, so it kind of overlaps all over the place. But that's kind of our core minimum staffing level. And quite honestly, where we're getting killed the most is days in that early part of PMs till seven, seven o'clock. I mean, the, the PM officers from 2:00 to 7:00 are really, really humping it. I mean, they're, they can barely keep up with calls most of the time. So-
So how many officers do you have right now? And how many, based on our population, do you actually truly need?
We, we have 22 officers sworn, which includes everybody, including the administration and myself. And again, the national average is one per 500 population. So that's simple math, meaning about 26 officers is where we should be at.
So we're actually four shy-
Yeah, four shy.
-of what public safety really needs.
Right.
So I guess I will at least, you know, try to work with the city to try to find at least one officer salary for this time. And hopefully, next year, we can just add another. It, it just, it doesn't sit right with me that we're that low, especially when we're adding another hotel and a senior center, which is going to increase the calls.
Anybody else for the police chief? Otherwise-
Off the hook.
We're now- I have two chiefs in the house.
All right. Thanks for, I guess, having, having me tonight.
I think you sound very sincere.
The one thing that I actually want to say is the volunteers actually save you an awful lot of money. We have authorized strength of like 42. Just a minute ago, there was a comment about 1 to 6 ratio. On the fire side, it's like 11 to 3. So we, we were, traditionally, they could work 24-hour shifts on a rotation, but 11 personnel would only get you 3, 24/7, 7 days a week. So something to keep in mind, depending on how you calculate it, the savings that the volunteers provide you is anywhere from $750,000 to 2.5 million. So with that being said, we struggle for help. My budget is pretty static. There isn't anything new that I can propose because I do not have help in order to do it. Since 2012, we've actually had, was when the retirement of the, the previous fire technician. He was replaced with 12 LTE personnel that worked a 40-hour, they, they filled a 40-hour gap is basically. So they were able to work anywhere from 4 to 10 hours a week, whatever, whatever they could do. For the most part, that dwindled because as they sought other employment, the, the numbers of the LTEs just continued to go down and down and down. So today, I'm an authorized strength of 2.2 and 3/4 in the station during the day. I have 42 possible slots as volunteers in the, in the city of Stoughton. Of the 42, I currently have 35 slots filled. I have, leaves me seven vacancies that I do not have enough applications for to fill. Of the 20, 35 members that I have, 25 of them work in Madison. So when we have an alarm, almost virtually every day, last year was 362 incidents, I really struggle for help during the day to do the things that we're being summoned to do. So and it's not just fires. I mean, we're going to crashes, we're going to rescues, we're going to lifts. I mean, if anybody needs a problem or has a problem, they dial 911, and the expectation is the fire department will, will respond. So we have an obligation to respond. We have an obligation to respond in a timely manner. If we're unable to respond, the county will page the next fire department to respond and take care of whatever emergency you may have in this community. We serve, besides the city of Stoughton, four townships that share in this budget process. So the city, I think, is doing 64% of the budget, and the remaining 40-some percent or 36% is split amongst those towns. So you're getting a pretty good value. So I guess I'll talk a little bit about option number one. Again, we work a traditional week, you know, 7:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday, and we rely on volunteers like all the time. Again, with that obligation to respond and not knowing what type of incident we're going to have, when we're obligated to respond, we're expected to perform. Once we're at an incident, or let's say it's a fire, we're required to determine cause, whether it's accidental or intentional. That's the role of the fire marshal. He actually currently works about 40 hours a week. Even with perfect planning, I can have an incident at 4:29 on Friday afternoon that'll compel him to actually have to work five or six additional hours just that day, and we still got two more days maybe in that week before the next time period. So our schedule, we are, we are constantly using comp and flex and everything like that, and he isn't afforded the same opportunities that when a street person is summoned to plow snow, we pay him for it. When we call in an extra police officer, we pay him for that. The expectation for the fire marshal is that we don't pay him for it, it's just part of his job. We, we run the risk of actually violating some federal and state labor laws. So that's part of my request for option number one. The option number two, I pretty much, I think I've covered it. I just need help. Being behind all the time, we've seen 20% increases since 2012 as far as the number of incidents we go to. We're currently at about the 300 mark now for, for incidents so far this year. I have absolutely no reason to believe that our requests for service will continue to increase over years. And what that does for the, even the volunteers, it actually lowers their percentage. So my highest performing firefighters that are volunteers that used to do 80 to 100% attendance or participation are now only able to do 50 to 60% at any given time. So I've got people all over the map as far as, you know, how much time they can contribute, but a, a high-performing volunteer, that we give them a stipend of approximately $1,600 a year, is putting in onwards up of 270 hours of service to the community every year. So it's a lot to ask. So, and I don't want to burn them out. So that's part of my request for trying to relieve the burden on just the volunteer by having some regular staff.
Do you have a question?
Chief, I'm just curious, can the townships also volunteer?
Can the town, yeah, we actually, I have firefighters who live in the township.
Okay.
So yeah, actually, all the, I think, all with the exception of Rutland. But yes, our rules actually allow for somebody that lives in the town to, to volunteer. So-
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, this is very disconcerting. I know recently that we put in a budget for the townships, what, you know, what their pay is. And how are there, I mean, have you talked to them about possibly that, I mean, that we really need to add at least two more hires? And with that need and your volunteers being stretched, would they be willing to help offset some of the cost of hiring two people, do you think, that we could amend a contract? I'm just trying to figure out, I, again, just like with the police, I don't like our public safety be stretched. This is not a good thing as a council to listen to this and to know that our citizens, you know, are at risk. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can at least get you one full-time employee this year. And again, next year, you know, as with the police, that we can possibly add on the other two. But trying to offset some of those costs, is there a way that we could go back to the other townships to help offset some of those costs so we can try to figure out where this money will come from in the budget?
I believe you can. However, the, the towns' contract requires that we undertake those discussions with them first, because that increases the amount that they have to budget, obviously.
Right.
They'll pay for a full-time person as well. So I think that conversation has to start like, like maybe January of this coming year, or what it would look like so that they can plan and be a part of the discussion, because they pay for a part of the person, for lack of some, another way to say it.
Right. Yep.
And then that's a going forward type of a thing, but it's, it's a discussion that would take a period of time. Needs to happen.
They're, they're already aware of that, because last night, we actually had a meeting with the EMS and fire towns where we went over the budget, and I told them the exact same thing that I've just told you. So they, they know I'm struggling for people.
Okay. So if somehow we can find the budget for one person, what is that actual cost? I'm trying, with you and the chief, so we can figure out what is the true cost that we have to figure out where it's going to come from, from the budget?
It'll be the wages and benefits. And when you read this-
Plus turnout gear.
Yeah, plus turnout gear. I mean, I, I have lots of other costs. To outfit a firefighter is about $2,500 in just protective ensemble.
Right.
So where the fire service actually differs just a little, even for just volunteers, where we differ from a law enforcement officer, when the police departments hire a, a police officer, generally, that police officer is actually already trained. In my case, I take a civilian, and it takes me at least nine months to a year in order to get them enough training, and it's approximately another year before they're really well-versed in what it takes to, to work, you know, for a fire department or emergency response agency. So, so yeah. So the numbers that have actually been suggested, although it says two full-time personnel here in what you're reading, if you read my letter and note, my proposal was actually for one full-time person, increase the existing one person that I have from 30 hours a week to 40 hours a week, and then add another 20 or 25-hour per week person, part-time, without benefits, which would get me a certain number of bodies in order to maintain or guarantee that we can put together some sort of adequate daytime response.
Okay.
It's about $75,000 for one person-
About $75,000.
-with benefits at family rate.
And just to comment on the, on the inter-agency agreements that we have, it, it was only a few years ago that, that most of those towns weren't paying anything. So it's, it's a challenge. I've had the opportunity to, to be a part of, of a couple of those discussions. And, and you know, to the mayor's comment, I, it is something that we can, we can bring up. It's going to take time. There's also realizing that some of those townships also have agreements with other areas as well. And so, you know, again, equity, trying to come up with those numbers.
I know. I'm just trying to think for going forward, this year, if we can somehow find $75,000, next year, maybe we can work-
Get help.
-with the other municipalities to offset that next $75,000 that we can-
It's providing them better service at that point, too.
Right.
So.
Yeah. In our cases, just to catch up, because we are constantly plagued with catching up with our maintenance, catching up with our records, and just normal tasks. Because if, if we do something else, we have to stop doing one thing in order to go do another thing and then come back to it. So there's, I mean, we're, we're trying to be as efficient as possible, but basically, whatever priorities looking at us in the face is what we have to deal with.
Scott and I have been working with, you know, outside-the-box conversation, outside-the-box ways that we can look at those daytime volunteers. So we've had a couple of really good opportunities that have come that Scott and AJ are looking at. But we're also talking with and talking about those businesses that have employees come to town every day. They might not live in Stoughton, but those folks come to Stoughton, and they're here all day long, every day. So the, the concept is to, to get that letter and engage with the companies to say, how do you feel, or would you approve if your employees wanted to become a volunteer firefighter, would you approve of them leaving when a call came during the daytime? You know, and just a, a quick conversation that I had at a Chamber of Commerce board meeting immediately brought one call from one of the businesses saying, "I'd like to talk to your fire chief a little bit more about that." Clearly, it's up to their employees to decide if they want to become firefighters or not. But at least it opens that door for folks that come to town. Maybe they can serve our town during the daytime. And Scott sees that and has heard of that in other communities as well. When we talk about the shortage in volunteer firefighters and, and EMTs as well, as much as we cherish those people and we honor those people, it's, I don't want to say crisis, but it's common throughout the United States these days.
Alder Person O'Connor had a question.
Well, I guess that was kind of where I was going with my question, is you see us becoming more of a full-time fire department with augmentation with volunteers?
I don't think we're there yet. Part of my reasoning is to actually just fill the gap during the day, because I think the, the volunteers actually have a very important role, and they fill a, a big role. We do have MABUS, you know, we have interoperability agreements with Oladain County and for that part, half the state. I mean, if we need backfill for any large incident, we can have apparatus here from Northern Illinois. I mean, the tornado, you know, several years ago was a very good example of that. We had 50 communities actually cycle through this, this city in just a couple of days. So they, they met the challenge. We have to meet that challenge from time to time. So yeah, we, we're all sharing resources already.
Anybody else have any questions for the chief? Does anybody need to take a break, or you want to keep going? Keep going. All right. Keep going. Keep going.
Building inspection, this really represents a allocation of time between the, the different people in our department, as well as the contractual service that we have for commercial electric service inspections that we have as well. So there's a slight increase as a result of that in this area.
So there's an increase in--
Allocation of time. This isn't revenue.
Okay.
This is all just expenses.
Okay.
You'll see there is a revenue increase in a future budget allocation, but this is the expense side.
Any questions on that?
City buildings, this really represents your operational expenses for the buildings, and I think most notably, you'll find it's related to utility reductions. Our trends in utility costs in a number of our buildings have caused some of these to be decreased in expenses. So I think you'll see that's one of the principal changes in the building area. Now, buildings covers a number of buildings, but utility cost is a major portion of that.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Shiel? All right. Takes us to Public Works.
All right, so don't want you to be alarmed, there's some pretty wild swings in these line items. And basically, mostly these are due to employee allocations. And so what we did this year is we went through all of our staffing and where they spend their time, based on real numbers, based on, we didn't use past numbers essentially to do this, we used actual numbers when it comes to timesheets. And so there's some pretty large swings when it comes to where we spend most of our time. But if you look at the bottom line, essentially, it's only about 1.7% increase in the overall operating budget. So these are tied to our allocations for staffing, and the increase is that 2.25 increase in employee wages. We did add $3,000 for a PPE line item, because we feel like that's very important. Before, that wasn't really funded, that was just taken out of general maintenance funds, and so that'll be funded separately. But for the most part, this is a pretty static budget, and the wild swings are due to allocations and staffing. Any questions on those?
Olaperson Trul?
Just a general one, and that's as we move forward with the potentially the new Public Works facility, have you taken a look or been able to think about what that's going to mean for us operationally? Will it be, you know, start to think about what next year's budget, next couple of years' budgets are going to be? Is it going to be, you know, there's been many discussions about the location and other things, but I know we've also talked about some of the benefits of combining some things.
Yeah, we've actually, when it comes to operating that building, our operational costs should actually go down, so be more of an efficient building. If we move forward with the solar option, our utility costs are definitely going to go down. We've also been talking with Middleton, they built a facility like two years ago, and some of their operational costs and what they experience. And we've also been working with WPPI on some of the costs that we can realize, that we can realistically budget for going forward. So that'd be the 2019 budget. And so the answer to your question is yes, we have been looking at that and doing some forecasting.
Olaperson O'Connor.
What is it that you do at Troll Beach for $27,000?
Not much. And I, that's, so we have BFO codes, and if you can imagine everything that we do, there's a Budget for Outcomes number. And so that $27,000 is one of the six line items we have for office supplies. So for $27,000, we get some office supplies tied to Troll Beach. So it's very important to our operation in a proposed community.
It costs more to process that than--
So we did ask for essentially two additional employees for our forestry crew. We have over 6,000 trees in our inventory for our urban forest, and right now, we have one person to essentially manage and maintain that urban forest for us. Essentially, we use streets crew members, we have six streets crew guys, and we use them to do forestry work, to supplement our forestry crew that we don't have. We also use contracted services, which is our option B, is to increase that amount by $56,000 to support essentially a trimming program. Right now, we have no program in place. John Kempin and I are working on putting together a program for trimming so that we can keep up on our urban forest. Trimming is critical when it comes to a risk management and liability standpoint, we have to keep up on our trimming for trees and keep them in a healthy state. So to do so, we proposed increasing our contracted services if the employees, increasing employees wasn't an option. So if these aren't funded, we would still work towards doing a plan when it comes to trimming. Essentially, you want to touch every tree every five years. So we have essentially the, the city broke up into five different segments, and we would, every year, that segment ideally would be trimmed. And so to do that, it would take that funding level, that's what we base that on. Any questions on those?
Yeah, at the current pace, you're behind.
Yeah.
How many years would it take you to get caught up, based on the static budget?
So based on the static budget, we would never catch up, because we would never be able to essentially--
Infinity?
Infinity and beyond, yeah. So essentially, we're doing the best we can with the staff that we have, and also utilizing some contracted services funds that we currently have. We have $45,000 in contracted services, that's also for taking down trees that are hazardous. And we also will be using some of those funds to do some trimming, but not at the level that we need to have it at to adequately maintain our urban forest.
So if we were to add the positions that you're requesting, then more, how long would it take to get?
I would say five years as we go through that cycle. So it'd take us essentially five years to work our way through the city, to touch every tree in those segments.
And that's just for the current, if we grow, there'll be more to do?
Yep, we would add to those segments or create another one. The reason why we chose five is because that's the ideal length of time that you want to let elapse before you maintain that tree again or touch that tree again. So that's the cycle that we want to be in, is a five-year cycle to maintain our urban forest.
Any questions about that? Thank you.
Do you want to just do community commitment real quick? Because I know the senior center director isn't able to make it this evening.
The senior center director's not able to be here, but I can do this one, and then we'll switch back to parks. So community commitment, the $7,300 includes $500 that we give to support our museum every year, and $6,800 that's used toward holiday promotion, and those are the lights and the wraps that we see downtown during our holidays. That's our community commitment fund. So now your time.
I did have a question for you. You had mentioned earlier that we couldn't get insurance for the fireworks. If that was something that we contracted out, and they had their own insurance, would we still be able to do that?
Well, if they were able to, if they were able to provide insurance and list the city as a second insured, but again, as you look through all these needs, not wants, but needs of our city, that's not something, again, my choice, right? Those weren't something that I categorized as a high need.
I understand that.
I would much rather provide one of these other departments with some things that they need.
And I understand that. So last year, when it was contracted out, did they provided their own insurance?
Right, and that was through the fair board, fair association.
Right.
I always say it wrong, but that was through them and their insurance.
Have you had any communication with them about next year and what the cities, I don't even know what the fourth lands on next year?
You know, I have not. I know that they're aware of my dissatisfaction, if you want to call it that way. Eight minutes for $10,000, $8,000 didn't do it for me.
Yeah, I don't think they were too pleased with the vendor.
No, they were not happy with it either, but it's just not something that I felt I needed to, that I could dedicate our very limited resources toward.
And I understand that, but the question is, is I know a few years ago, you were able to fundraise to pay for them.
Yep.
If somebody were willing and able to do that with a contracted company, they could still do the fireworks as long as they have the insurance?
As long as they had the insurance to cover it, but, I mean, that's my understanding, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
So the parks' maintenance budget is really awfully stagnant. You'll notice the parks mowing had $27,377 in it. Essentially moved that up into the park maintenance fund, so that's where that zeroed-out amount comes from. So essentially, we made it easier on ourselves when it came to a budget and not having it in a separate line item. Then we did increase the broadleaf control for our parks. I do hope that in the future, this number will come down for the amount that we use on our parks to treat our turf. Essentially, we're going through an IPM, Integrated Pest Management, program, and we have high hopes that this is going to reduce the amount of pesticides that we use, thus reducing the cost and some of the environmental impacts. So we did increase it this year just to get to a point where our weed pressures are down in our green spaces, and hopefully, once those weed pressures are down below 30% or 15%, depending on the park, that we can reduce the amount that we use this line item.
Olaperson Trul?
Brett, how many acres of parkland did we add?
19. So it's a combat that through the CIP process, we did add additional 12-foot mower. And so it's definitely, as time goes on, it does take more effort to maintain these properties.
Olaperson Johnson, and then Kittleson, and then I thought I saw somebody over here, maybe?
I thought at one of the meetings, we had to buy another lawnmower that was like $70,000 or $90,000.
That's that 12-foot mower--
Okay.
--that we acquired. So that extra, you know, that bigger mower is going to help us to maintain that 19 acres that we're going to be taking on the next two years. So that was the purpose of purchasing that.
Because we increased our park size so much?
Over the next two years, as new parks come online, it's about roughly 19 acres that we're going to be taking on for green space to maintain.
It also helps, and Brett and I have talked about that before, it helps because we know that staffing is at a prime or at a minimum. By buying those larger pieces of equipment, you can get more done with the same amount of staff.
Correct.
Did you have something, Olaperson Killson? Okay. Anybody else?
I actually feel a little guilty not having any needs. I mean, we're actually pretty comfortable with our staffing, and I'll just get into a little bit about that. In our bottom line, we're asking, with all of our four groups together, when you figure in the revenues, we're figuring that we're increasing at about $854 this year. So that's pretty close to even, but when I think about how we can do that, and this, because this sounds like, I don't know, it's a cheap suck-up move, but every single department in our city helps us get where we get. I mean, you can go right down the list, from everything from the clerks to the finance department, but, so it's like we have this huge extension of all these people that help us do our job. So we really benefit, I think, probably more than any other department, from everybody else doing stuff for us. So I just want you to know that when you're considering, you know, the size of our budget, but how we get there. But actually, none more important than, I own the parks and the street department with Brett and Pat. And so we're out trying to create things all the time to give people more things to do and more places to do them, but every time we do that, those guys have to find a way to get it done on the outside. They have to mow something new, they have to line another field. And so maybe the good thing about our budget not growing a lot, hopefully leaves room for you to be able to help them get where they need to get, because that's really where the growth in cost that affects us is through parks maintenance. So I just wanted to get that out first before we kind of got through this. So if you look at the recreation side, there's not a lot of big changes there. I'm not sure if you want a lot of detail. I really like to talk about the revenues, and I wish there was a column to show that, because what we do is really based on, when we grow, the revenues grow, and we try to keep it that way. So on the recreation side, our bottom line is we're going to be plus $6,000 on the good side this year in that area. Troll Beach will be, will cost the city an extra $331 this next year, when you take our increases minus the revenues. The parks and open space management, that's most of my salary, it's park development. We get some revenues from the usage of the parks through shelter usages and Ball Diamond reservations. That one will cost the city about $1,900 total, more than last year. And then, yeah, the youth center comes up next. So I guess I can give you any details on any of those things that I just said, if you ask, but I didn't want to take up your time just talking. Okay. So this is our youth center budget. Again, when we look at our big picture in our department, we count everything, and if you look at the bottom line, it looks like a big increase, and I just kind of want to get into what that is. Earlier, the mayor had mentioned a $5,000 increase for staff salaries. There's also, there's a miscalculation based on last year's number in the comparison of about $2,000 for my allocation, so you could probably take off $2,000 off that bottom line and bring it down to 11. And then our revenues countering that, that we bring in, are at 4,720, so, I'm sorry, they're at 7608, bringing the cost to the city on the youth center at about 4,720 this year, over last year. So that's our biggest growth area, but in the big picture with the other things, it fits in good. Another reason for that increase is I found it a lot easier to generate revenue through fundraising in our sponsorship program than I did when I was fundraising for youth center activities. The friends at the youth center are raising about $120,000 each year, so I felt I was competing with them a lot of times for the same kind of money. I thought it was better to let them go after it and focus our attention more on the revenues that we could get through our sponsorship program for our gazebo music and the swimming pool, which we were able to budget for next year at about $14,000. And that's a big reason why our recreation budget is on the plus side this year.
Olaperson Inover?
Thank you. Tom?
Yep.
What is the $169,000 for? I mean, we don't pay the salary of the youth center director, right? Or do we?
It--
Portion, or no?
It's there, but it's coming in as a revenue side. So it doesn't show the revenue. It's, we're paying it, and it shows it on the expense.
$169,038, is that's city money, right?
Yep.
And what does it go for?
It goes for everything down there.
Like what?
The salaries of the staff, I think, is, no, the building maintenance is not--
Is it portioned your staff in there, or no?
Part of my salaries in there, yes.
Programs.
So--
How many staff people do we have down there? I was under the impression we had a director and that was it, but we've got--
There's three part-time staff.
Okay.
So, let's see if I can break that down.
Comes out as an expense, there's also a revenue that comes, the majority--
Right. Yeah, like I said before, like about $120,000, just off the top of my head, comes back to the city for that. So that's where, it's coming back to cover it, so you can see the--
Okay, so what's donated from outside offsets this?
Yes. Leaving about $45,995 is the city's share of running the youth center.
Part of that is the basic-- So I mean, the $169,000 isn't all city money, then?
Just on paper, it is, until you bring the revenues back.
It includes all the outside money. So I mean, that--
This is just--
To me, why is it in our budget?
This is just the expense side, we're not reflecting the, all the income. So the answer is, it is-- So I mean, so, so the answer is, it is, it is city expense, we're just being reimbursed through the donations and the like.
Mike, it, it came from the development of that whole program.
Certainly can't be part of the tax rule, then, if, if there's private money involved in that. Your numbers aren't making sense to me here, because I don't see the breakdown. I don't see a breakdown here.
Yep, we'll get one.
Basically, I can, I can just say that in the end...
And I'm not just saying about this one, I'm saying about all of these.
Yeah, we'll get that to you at the end of the night. We wanted you to listen to the services we provide first, and then we'll get you all the detail on it. So it's not, it doesn't make sense unless you see the big picture first.
That's right.
And then we'll bring it down.
Right, it doesn't.
Well, if I may, please.
I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, all right.
Alder Person Hirsch, did you have something?
No, I, I guess I was just in agreement is that it's really hard to look at this budget without it being line items, because we don't know the revenues, we don't know the true cause, we don't know the true expenditures, it's, it's, it's really hard to determine when we're talking about needs of where it can actually come out of when we don't have the line items and understand what goes into each of these numbers.
Right, these are telling you the true cost of the services that we provide, and we'll get you the line items when you leave tonight, but we wanted you to see the services that each of our departments provide and the cost of each of those services, because the line items don't make sense unless you know how it all builds into a service. And it'll get there, it'll get there yet.
Having said that, though, having said that, and that's the challenges, as Tom was just making his presentation, he was talking about net and cost and things like that, which, which effectively, no disrespect, Tom, but virtually everything you've said was, was kind of, to Alderman Engelberger's comment, too, it was kind of useless, because we don't, I mean, you're talking about true net and where we're at and, and savings, and so nothing ties out for us. So that's, that's why it's, it's a challenge for all of us to...
It's not just you, it's, it's all these sheets. You just happen to be the one that we're just up to here with it. That's all.
Make an example of.
Well, I'll...
But it's true.
It wouldn't be me if Tom didn't say something to me.
He didn't raise his hand.
He's good. I think Alder Person Johnson has a question.
She did, go ahead.
We didn't do this last year, did we?
Yes, we did.
We looked at the lines, didn't we?
No, we did this as well as the lines.
Yeah.
We did both, which is what we're going to do again this year.
It's just formatted a little different, but it was the same...
We're just walking through it, yep, okay. Same stuff last year.
Okay, anything else on what he's, so it includes, the, the cost includes some things that are offset, but it also includes like the cost of the building, the rent, and those sort of things?
It's all in here.
Can you talk about the building maintenance?
No, I'm talking about the, the rent.
The, the rent goes into the building maintenance, I believe.
It goes right into the fund?
Yeah, so that's not showing on here.
All right.
There still is a, a building maintenance line there, and Rodney and the staff have been able to reuse that, which has been good. Good job down there, the staff did scare them really well.
Well, and, and it's important to remember, we do pay a quote-unquote rent, and the rent of that building is the previous year's taxes.
Right.
So there is a, there's a, right, that's part of the expenses in there as well.
Right. Well, it's our equipment. Any other questions about the youth center, otherwise we'll drag people in here.
Thanks, Tom.
IT makes us the debut.
And we all promise to help him, we're kind of throwing him into the...
This is a process that I was ill-prepared for.
Well, neither are we, so don't worry about it. You can pull up the microphone so we can hear you.
Welcome, John, by the way.
Oh, well, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Like the, the Public Works Department, my variations are all over the place as well, just because it's a, a newly-formed department, as well as combined department and consolidated services and billings that we're discovering through this entire process. The, the first line item on here, obviously, was, you know, in 2017, $115,000, which was just allocated at, at one point, just because it was unknown what was really going to be needed once the IT director came on board. And then the interdepartmental media services, we're seeing a 20% increase in there. A lot of that is just reallocations of salaries, which is one of the things that I've been hearing here, and also just additional services that we're providing, the time, the salary proportions for budgeting for outcomes is playing a role within some of the services that we're providing other departments. Interdepartmental phone and services administrations is up quite a bit here, because we're pulling in all of the different bills that have been going to the various departments, they're all going to be consolidated under IT, so instead of getting, you know, just a very small portion, we're taking all of them and then reallocating them out. Also, within that amount of money, we've signed a maintenance agreement in our phone system, just to make sure that we have that security in place in the event that there's ever a, a failure of services, where we can get everything up and running as quickly as possible. One of the things, as far as the webpage design and admin, that has gone up substantially as well. The feedback that I've gotten from either Alder people, other fellow department heads, and also some feedback from citizens, is our website. So I'm looking at having that completely redesigned, making it much more user-friendly, and we had a conversation with another company, CityGov, to take care of streamlining it and making it more efficient, as well as providing a better communication avenue for changes that can be pushed out to either citizens, user groups, city council members, for instance, anytime that there's a change within the budget or the meeting packets, as soon as that change is put in there, all of the alter people would get a email notifying them of the change, just things that are going to make it much more user-friendly. Information technology is made up, I believe, of salary and benefits.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And then the community media production on here, that's taking into consideration a 2.5% increase in the salaries, as well as reallocation of some time. We're starting to utilize more of our part-time staff for some of these events, so we're not paying, you know, a higher salary for an individual to, you know, tape the recordings or go to the events. All in all, it's a 7.9% decrease from 2017 to 2018.
Go ahead, Alder Person Trul.
The one, one comment you made, I, I can appreciate the fact that you're pulling in a lot of different budgets and the like, but when you were talking about the interdepartmental media, media services, you indicated there's additional services. What would be helpful is to understand what those additional services are.
Well, it's, it's not more additional services, I should say, it's, I guess, Tammy, where'd we come up with some of this? Because it was just a reallocation of things that we were finding that were getting charged.
Right.
Wrong departments, softwares that were being charged against other departments. We're finding all of these different things where we can...
Okay, and that's, that's where, or I guess I'm, I'm coming from, you know, if, and forgive me, it was, I, I thought you had actually indicated that you, you said that you, that in that category, it also included additional services. I can appreciate us trying to grab funds from a lot of different places, I just was curious as to whether we are effectively adding additional services to things that we've done this year, and if the, if so, what the cost is. I mean, I can appreciate the fact that the mayor's indicated we've got, what, an extra $15,000 in for the webpage. I can get that, I just didn't know if there was anything else that you were...
Yeah, just the more additional community events that we're doing, you know, the...
And the line items will probably make more sense, too, once you get those. You know, right now, the only things that were transferred in from outside were software costs from the PD, about 11,000, the website, it used to have its own accounts numbers, and we combined the two of those, we moved all of the website costs into IT now, that was about 9,000, and then the $25,000 from the finance department. So all of that was built in on top of what was funded last year.
And that's really where the challenge, this year, I mean, we realize that, that there's a lot of things that have been going on, all I'm coming to that point is, at the end of this year, we're going to actually have a baseline that we can actually start working from, and all I wanted to know is if there's anything else in terms of any new initiatives or additional, like back to, I guess, I was specifically picking up on a comment you made about the additional services. Are we doing something else? Because we're talking about, about other areas that, that are, very honestly, when we've had this discussion about public safety, it's, if we're adding, adding some media services, I frankly would like to know what those are and what they cost. If we're just really doing the, the first time here and condensing the budget and getting ourselves a good baseline to work from?
That, that is good. It's because we are pulling all of these things in here to find out where exactly are we, so we do have a good baseline to start the beginning of the year.
Sounds good.
That we talked about under the police chief's budget, in that we're taking, it sounds bad, but we're taking some IT things out of the hands of a police lieutenant, not the hands of a few others. At this fee, we're getting less of a lieutenant, the lieutenant's just going to be doing more lieutenant things, and John and his department are going to be picking up some of those items and doing them. You're right, Alder Person Trul, we're combining this department and making a baseline this year, and, you know, see how that goes moving forward.
It's going to go well.
It will go well.
It's going to go well.
Okay, so I have Chief Lach, Alder Person Mieske, and whoever else after that.
I, I just wanted to comment briefly, and John's only been here a short time, and we've already seen just a super amount of efficiency increases, and our discussions are ongoing, and we're looking at all areas of, of stuff, I mean, and the PD's going to be, is one of the heaviest uses of the IT position right now, and I don't see that getting any better going into the future, but the impacts that John's made already and, and the discussions that we've had about streamlining processes in the future, so I think you're going to see a lot more of that coming as a result of not so much going into the 18 budget, but what changes are made in 18 that'll be reflected in 19. That's where the real, the real benefit's going to really start to shine out, because again, it, it takes time to look at all these different things and get comfortable with knowing what they are, and, but I just, I had to comment that John has just done a phenomenal job, and he's already streamlined a bunch of stuff for us already, and has helped us with our connectivity in the squad cars, and has just been really a godsend all the way through, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Chief Lach.
Alder Person Mieske.
I just wanted to extend what Alder, Alder Trul was saying, was that, you know, we have, this is a baseline, and I would really encourage you to look at the utilities, especially when it comes to their phone system, because that should be part of the baseline, and it's, and let's not lose sight of the fact that it is a city department, it is not a standalone entity that needs to be integrated into the city, and I think with IT, specifically, you know, we have a lot of redundancies, I believe, between those, between that department and the rest of the city, and hopefully, that your department will start to take over that.
I agree, yes.
And start to, and start to pull it back into the realm of manageability.
Yes.
And also hopefully get us some savings.
And I just wanted to echo Alder Person Mieske's thoughts, I, I do think that there is an opportunity in the area of IT to create some efficiencies between the city and utilities, and, you know, one thing that you mentioned was the website design and support, and, I mean, they have a website, we have a website, you know, it seems to me that there's some overlap there and some opportunity to take a look at, and I don't know the individuals that manage them, so I don't know what their, their levels are, if they're compatible and interchangeable, but I certainly think those are the kind of conversations I'd like to see you have, and I'd certainly support you in those efforts.
Well, thank you, and I agree.
Anybody else? That was painless.
From your side.
The planning department, couple of pages here, the net result ultimately is really a minimal increase, and it really relates principally because of the proposed wage and wage benefit adjustment to the, to the matrix, but you'll see some reallocation of personnel time within the department, obviously reduction in information technology hours, not going to zero yet, but hopefully able to provide some valuable insight for John as he moves forward. If there's anything specific that stands out at you, let me know, and I'll respond to that.
Rodney, I've got to ask, just, you just, I'm, are you looking at different numbers than I am? It's a slight decrease.
You're right, decrease, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, you're right. Kudos is what you're supposed to say, right?
I was wondering if you were looking at a different sheet than, than we had?
You're right, correct.
Because we're looking at one that says $11,000 less.
Thank you.
And I wanted to put a shout-out for the, you know, earlier, we talked about the landmarks and the money that is budgeted, basically, it's a grant for somebody that has a historical building that wants to do some work on it, which is, you know, can be costly, and I know that this year, the recipients are, are going to do some great things with it, and old movie theater is certainly one of the beneficiaries, and there's some others as well, so I would encourage us, as we go forward the budget, to try to leave that in there. I did have one question that I want to ask about the IT, and this is for Tammy, is that, so we had budgeted for this year, you know, to fill the position, and the assumption was we're going to fill it the first of the year. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that, so the question is, is what became of the, the funds that were budgeted this year until that position was filled?
They're still there, and what John is talking about, and he's going to be bringing forward soon, will be some potential changes to some of the servers, some equipment that he's going to pursue purchasing with your approval, so if anything, those funds would be utilized to fund that.
So it'd be like a budget amendment, or how, what is the process for that?
Well, it would be used within, it would be used within his budget, it would probably come out of the IT expense, and then the, the wages account would be way under and the IT expense would be over, but the bottom line would still be under what was budgeted.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So I think we're at a good spot to, to stop for tonight. I mean, if you're finished with planning, and transfer to other funds is coming up next. I know we have the senior center, Cindy wasn't able to be here tonight, and she'll, she'll be here next week, though, so we can go through the senior center, the opera house, library EMS, stormwater utility, and then Tammy will take us through some transfers and, and other types of budgets next, next time. If it goes as smoothly, I guess, or as quickly as tonight, we'll see, maybe we won't need the 26th, but I think we'll be able to finish up on the report out fairly efficiently next Thursday night, and then on to some more Q and A.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts or questions? And then you said you were going to get us the line?
Yep, we have those line item, Tammy's got them right there.
All right, and those will be posted on the website as well?
Absolutely, yep, all of this, tonight that you've, so, have seen will be on the website.
It's going to be a big link.
There'll probably be a couple.
All right, so I heard a motion to adjourn in a second. Any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed.